Good evening. Call to order the meeting of April 22nd. Do you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Spanish translator.
We have Vivian Rodriguez.
Si, buenas tardes y bienvenidos de parte de la Junta Directiva del Distrito Escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Gracias. We have also headsets for the hearing impaired as noted on the overhead here. If you need some, let us know. We have no announcements from of closed session action. Acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with appreciation.
Second.
Motion by Harder, second by Cordero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero. Oh, I thought I heard you. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, and recognitions.
Well, we do have just one introduction and presentation tonight. John Beckio, would you please come forward? On March 8th, Santa Barbara Junior High marked its 75th anniversary. Principal John Beckio is here to share some highlights of that event, and it was a great event. The community certainly appreciated it, and your alumni and staff just loved it.
Well, we, I started the year this year with an idea to have a 75th anniversary event, but it was an idea that maybe was much smaller than what our parents pulled together and pulled off, and I want to recognize them. Our PTSA president is here tonight, Mary Gibson, and a couple other parents will be showing up. But we also, for this event, we had a carnival and food and prizes and presentation in the Luke Theater, and we had different performances throughout the day in the Luke Theater to celebrate our school architectural tours of the school. And one of the pieces of the beginning presentation in the Luke was a historical slideshow of our school that was created by one of our PTA parents, Chris Spear, with help from Joey McKay, a parent of ours, and our library media teacher, Lanell Glass. So, we wanted to bring that to you tonight so you could all see the video, and I did leave you a historical book of Santa Barbara Junior High and a photo postcard that was actually part of the Kids Draw Architecture event we had the week before this event, and that was one of our drawings that we made postcards out of. And then there's a lapel pen and a pencil. So, walk away with gifts tonight, but I'll show you the video.
Thank you. Thank you.
I know you have a lot of important and interesting business to take care of tonight, so thank you for letting us present that video to you.
Oh, thank you very much for presenting that. It was wonderful. It's wonderful to see all those faces.
Welcome.
So, the trees grew up and the kids did too.
I'm sorry, I just have to comment on the fact that I'm an alum, and I was there in March to see that wonderful presentation, and it was so great to be back there, and I just wanted to compliment you on the wonderful, the wonderful event. It was, it was great to see a lot of people back at the school for, who hadn't been there in quite a while. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we had a guestbook as people entered, and we asked alumni to sign in on the guestbook, and we gave each alumni a lapel pen as they signed the book, and we had...
Over 180 alumni dating back to 1933.
So, yeah, 180 alumni showed up.
Yeah, that one group shot of the six older folks were the original class of...
19, yeah, the 1932-33 class was those, those six individuals, and we did have a press conference with them the week before, and our journalism class led that, so that was pretty fun too. But, so definitely a group effort.
I also want to note, Mr. Beckio, that one of your parents put together that terrific show, and it's Chris Spear. He happens to be in the back of the room, so thank you.
Right, Chris Spear who's in the back. Thank you.
Well, that's it for our presentations tonight. I do have a superintendent's report. We have a lot to get done tonight, so I'll be brief. On Monday at 11 o'clock, we're holding a ribbon cutting at Santa Barbara High School to mark the completion of the six elevators at a cost of more than $5.4 million at that campus. That's this next Monday, 11 o'clock, and it will be at the top of the elevator that goes down to the tennis court, so the one to the east of the main building. While we're pleased to have ADA accessibility, better ADA accessibility on our campuses, the total cost of the ADA projects across the campuses, elementary and secondary, has reached $30 million, and that accounts in large part for the non-completion of projects in our bond measure construction. Now, that's not the primary factor. The primary factor was rising construction costs, but that contributed significantly. Our secondary district's graduation promotion schedule is posted on the web, and you see the website listed here. So, it's accessible from the homepage, and board members will be querying you about your attendance primarily on June 12th for junior high and high school graduations, and we have the LaCuesta graduation Wednesday before that, the previous night, but June 12th will be a busy day. Wear sunblock. Our Eighth Annual Employee Appreciation Day will be held on May 8th at Borders on State Street. The business community has rallied in support of providing some wonderful items. You see a lot of the contributions for the Employee Appreciation Day on tonight's gifts and contributions. Speaking of Borders, the State Street store is holding a spring book drive to benefit our elementary district library program. Let me talk about the Board Brief for just a moment. My office regularly issues a report to the Board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on school district matters. A copy is available in the reception area or in my office. Just two items to highlight in the April 11th Board Brief. One was the number of high school students enrolled in Santa Barbara City College courses over the last six years, which was something the Board had requested, and the other is the Lacoumbre After-School Program, an extensive write-up on what activities are available in the Lacoumbre After-School Program. Coming up in days ahead, at Santa Barbara High, we have the Visual Arts, no, excuse me, not at Santa Barbara High, but Santa Barbara High School's Visual Arts and Design Academy Annual Art Exhibition is on display at the Ridley Tree until May 2nd. San Marcos's High's performance of Damn Yankees runs May 1 through 3 and the 8th through the 10th. Santa Barbara High School's performance of Beauty and the Beast begins on May 9th. We'll then have performances on the 14th, 15th, 16th, 18th. There will be matinees over that weekend. Lacoumbre Junior High will present Gary Smith and the Kids Sing the Hits on May 10. La Colina Junior High's Advanced Concert Band Jazz Band and Drum Line Spring Concert takes place on May 15. Galita Valley Junior High's Beginning and Advanced Band Concert will be held on May 20, and also on May 20 will be San Marcos's High Beginning and Advanced Band Concert on May 20. Dos Pueblos High School will present Beauty and the Beast, May 22nd through 24th. Please go to our district website for more information. I didn't list all the start times. I figured you'd just be overwhelmed with that much information, and I do not believe we have a student report tonight. I did not see the student in the audience, and I don't see anyone jumping up, so I think that's it tonight.
Next, we have public comments. This is a time when public can speak on items not on the agenda. So, do we have any public comments? Okay. Next, the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull 1, 2, and 4.
I'm going to pull 3, 7, 9, 10, and 12.
3, 7, 9, 10, and 12. Any others? Okay, do I hear a motion for the remaining?
Yeah, move to approve the remaining items.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. So, we begin the action agenda. F1, we are going to go out of order here a little bit, so we're going to item F1, School Services of California Staffing Recommendation.
Well, our major item of business tonight is the next item coming up, which is the second reading and approval of the Fiscal Recovery Plan and Budget Cuts. However, we thought it would be very important for the Board to hear the final report from School Services of California. We're hearing this item first because the fiscal recovery, because it may present further demands on our budget, and we want the Board to know that before we go into budget cuts. To introduce this, Eric Smith, our Deputy Superintendent, will give the introduction.
Thank you, Dr. Sarves. Some time ago, prior to me coming on board, the Board commissioned a study that basically was a fiscal health analysis and comparative analysis to look at the efficiency and effectiveness of the school district's business office. School Services of California, which is a leading authority in school finance, was retained to perform that analysis. Several months ago, they provided the Board with an interim update relative to their findings, and now that they've completed their report, they're here to give the final findings and recommendations. John Gray from School Services of California is here, and we're trying to track him down as I buy time. I just saw him a few moments ago, so I know Patricia Baldonado's looking for him at this point in time. I think he was scheduled to be on time specific at 6:40. Is that correct? And we're a little bit early.
I hate to be ahead of schedule.
I know, but if you'll excuse me for a minute, I could go see if I can track him down.
Well, let's do that.
Okay.
Meanwhile, let me give more of the background.
Tonight's presentation is really in follow-up to the budget, the erroneous budget we were presented with in June. By the end of the summer, we had reliable budget numbers, but we wanted to take a clean outside look at our budget procedures and brought in School Services of California to do a number of things. And, John, I know that you'll be enumerating those as you go along in the presentation, so I won't spend more time. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Sarves, the Board of Education, it's my pleasure to be here. I was before you, once before, in January, right after all the bad news came down from the state of California. We were asked to come in and do an independent review of the district and look at several things, including your multi-year projections, how you were forecasting your financial future, how you were organized, how efficient you were in some of your support functions, primarily under the business umbrella, and also to do a comparative analysis to see how Santa Barbara operates in comparison to others that look similar to Santa Barbara. We submitted our report last week. I believe there's a draft in the back, and the Board has been given a copy of the report. Tonight, what I'd like to do is cover the high points of my report, and that's what this PowerPoint is designed to do. I think overall, we had 60 recommendations in all areas of your operations. A lot of them were things that were pretty easy to change, pretty easy to fix. Others are going to take a lot of planning, a lot of execution. I will tell you, we started our engagement a few months ago. Through the entire process, as we found things, as we saw things that we thought we were going to make recommendations, we shared them with the administration. And so, a lot of what we're going to talk about tonight, and a lot of what's in the report, a lot of those things have been addressed, and that's always a good sign for us. We're always saddened to hear that they're just waiting for the report before they can take any action to control their own destiny. We are pleased that a lot of things that the district can do to help itself, one, through this financial crisis, but also to become more efficient in its operations, corrective action has already begun. Oops, sorry. So, my first area of operational focus has to do with systems, how things get processed through the district. And systems aren't only just computer systems, they're manual systems. It's your processes and procedures for getting things done in the business area for the Santa Barbara school districts. And so, we had several recommendations in this area. One, your current system is behind on being updated, systems release versions periodically. It's very important to keep current on those versions because these systems and these companies that develop these systems are keeping current with current law, the tax laws, and they're ensure that the state-of-art procedures that are out in the industry are available in those systems. And so, we think that is a very important thing for you to do, is to get current on your current system. An area where we think needs to, there needs to be a lot of improvement is in the systems of position control. Position control is probably the single most important system in a school district. School districts by their nature are people, most of your expenditures are in people. The average unified district has 90% of its unrestricted general fund in people, and if you lose control over the number of positions, the number of people you're paying, you're going to pay a heavy price, because with that amount of your budget tied up in people, little errors can lead to big financial consequences. And so, we can see where you could make improvements in that area. First of all, the system itself, it's labor-intensive, it involves spreadsheets, it involves your computer system of record, and you don't have one integrated database for position control, including budget, payroll, human resources. Now, the system that you're current operating on does have those capabilities, and we believe that you should take advantage of those capabilities. Another thing on position control, right now, we don't think the responsibilities are divvied up the most optimal way. Right now, your human resources department carries a large burden on position control. Well, industry standard is budget should drive positions. Think of it in two ways. There's places, excuse me, spaces and faces. Budget should drive the number of people you're going to hire, ensure that there's budget behind it, and that they're board-approved, and that's a function that is traditionally handled by those responsible for your budget, because the biggest budget buster you can have is losing control over the number of positions you have. Human resources, on the other hand, does have a role, but instead of spaces, I think of faces. Their responsibility is to attract and retain the best people for your district and place them in those spaces that are board-approved and have a budget behind those spaces. And so, we've made numerous recommendations on the area of position control. The other area of your budget that's not tied up in people, while as a percentage of your budget isn't quite as large, it's still a significant amount of money for a school district like yours, and we see areas where you can make improvements there also. Think of purchasing, accounts payable, receiving. Right now, you have a process that's paper-intensive, it's labor-intensive. Ideally, in 2008, you should have a system where if somebody puts in a requisition, it's electronic, the budget is checked. Is it an appropriate budget for this person to be ordering off of? Is there money in that budget? All of that should be automated and checked prior to even coming downtown to be processed. Right now, it's on paper, there's a manual lookup of, is there money? Is it the right budget account? And it's a labor-intensive process. In both the areas of position control and the purchasing process, you have some very hard-working individuals in this district. They are working extremely hard, and, you know, coming from the outside, it seems, wow, an easy fix, just let's just throw more bodies at the problem. Well, we don't think that's a good way to address a lack of proper systems. We think you need to fix the system first, then evaluate it, and if you're operating efficiently, if good practices are repeated automatically, and then you find that you might have a processing power problem, at that time would be the time to look whether or not you need to add positions. Right now, I would not feel comfortable recommending that you add positions for these functions because there's not operating optimally. They can be improved without adding positions. At the end of the day, once they're improved, you may sometime down the road think, maybe we need another person. And then, part of that is cleaning up the vendor files, that should actually be under the same bullet. One thing we noted, which is common in a lot of districts that are having some fiscal challenges, is a lack of continuity and strong leadership in the business office. And I'm not commenting on specific individuals in the past or anything like that. The thing is, you've had many of them over not that long of time, and, you know, you get somebody new, you need them to stay, let them do their work, get things fixed, and then hold them accountable. And unfortunately, you've had what I would call sort of a revolving door in the chief business official function. So, coming in, and this is one of those recommendations early on, we saw this as one of the most critical recommendations, getting a competent chief business official in the position, because all those things on systems, fixing your procedures, your processes, none of that will happen without strong leadership in the business office. So, we are pleased that you're able to attract a highly qualified chief business official. Segregation of duties, in principle, those procedures, systems, processes that are put in place to detect errors and prevent irregularities, but also to improve the efficiency of operations. We noted in your organizational chart several areas where we thought there could be improvement. There's no mystery why most organizations have a purchasing department and an accounts payable department and a payroll department and an HR department. They all serve as checks and balances on the other functions. Somebody didn't just dream up the departments and said, this is a good way to organize. Part of sound in kernel controls is organizing your district in a manner which achieves those internal controls. And so, this is the organization chart that we found in your district, and quite frankly, we see this in a lot of districts. What it reflects to me is a district that has moved around departments and functions over time, and usually to accommodate whoever were in the positions at that time. And so, this chart shows me that over time, some of the functions have been put under other directors than the chief business official, and it might be because the chief business official at the time may not have felt they had enough expertise in a certain area to supervise it, or the time to supervise it. Now that you have a fully qualified CBO in all areas of business, we think you can now make a change. And so, this org chart, which was in place when we walked in, we believe probably evolved over time, and so we have several recommendations that we're going to make. And I'll tick off a few on this organization chart, then I'll show you what we are proposing for your organization. Well, you can see under the Director of Facilities and Operations, you see the Food Services Department, you see Purchasing, Warehousing. The Purchasing Department in a school district is one of the key internal control positions in a district. Everything that's procured in a district should be going through that control function. That function should have the expertise and all the legal aspects of purchasing, and also be shopping on your behalf to make sure that you're getting the high-value, low-cost product for your money. And right now, that function is under the Facilities and Operations Department, and we think that would be an internal control weakness, and it's no reflection on anybody in those positions now. In fact, both those positions, we were quite impressed with the people holding those positions. But the Facilities and Operations area is one of the biggest customers of a purchasing department. You need somebody independent, a check and a balance on what's going through, because your big cost purchases, not in volume but in amounts, are coming from that department. And so, we think, for instance, purchasing might be moved. Food services is another area. You know, your food services cafeteria fund's been running a deficit in the past, it's a drain on your general fund, and ideally, having it report to somebody with district-wide budget responsibility, we think's the best way to handle it. So, let me go to the new org chart and kind of show you what I'm talking about. Now, a couple of things on this org chart, and I want to highlight what is a shift of a position, what is a change of a position, and whether or not there's an addition of the position, because I think that's very important. And so, as the first thing, you can see, the last org chart had Assistant Superintendent. You now have a Deputy Superintendent, and I believe this is on page 64 or something of your, of the hard copy report. But one of the things you can see, we've removed the purchasing function out from under the Director of Facilities and Operations and moved it to the far left, and have that as a direct report to the chief business official. If that position has a conflict with any other director in the district or in the business division, we believe they need a straight line to the person who can resolve it, and we believe that's the Deputy Superintendent. You'll see a little slash there for Risk Manager. Let me explain what we're recommending. We're actually recommending a purchasing agent position, and we would see that as a lower-level management position. We think the purchasing function is such that it should be a management-level position, and what we're proposing is a lower management position. But because a lot of the purchasing functions' expertise kind of cross over into the area of risk management, ideally, in a, if you were a larger district, we would recommend a purchasing agent and a risk manager. Based on our review of other districts, the size and complexity of your district, right now, we don't believe two positions are warranted. But we believe that the functions with the right person, with the right expertise, can handle that purchasing function and that risk management function, which currently is being handled by an administrative assistant. Risk management, we believe, is of sufficient exposure for a district like yours to warrant a management position detail. Now, we're recommending the purchasing agent position. Right now, purchasing is staffed by one person who's in the bargaining unit, and we're not recommending elimination of that position, but of all the positions that we feel strongly about, this would be the one. Number one, we think it needs to move into those reporting lines regardless of what you do with the position. Two, we think it should be a purchasing agent position with higher expectations and accountability of an administrator position. And three, we would like to, I would like to see maintenance of the current purchasing position, but again, that's for your consideration. But again, that's for your consideration. You might phase it in over time. But ideally, that would be our recommendation. Another recommendation, your report has an error in it, and so, we fixed the report. Your district now has a new copy sitting on their computer. But I believe in the report, and what you originally saw was the Bond Accountant reporting to the Director of Facility and Operations. We recommend that that be removed from the supervision of the Director of Facilities and Operations, and it report up through the Director of Fiscal Services. Again, the accounting function is a check and balance on an operational function. And yes, that position is going to work very closely with the Facilities and Operations Department. In fact, might work 90% with them. But if there's a conflict, if the Bond Accountant has a difference that needs to be aired out, we think a different reporting line provides a better segregation of duties. We recommend that the Food Service position, the Director of Food Service, again, report to the Deputy Superintendent. I mentioned earlier, you're running in a deficit. Your current CBO has the expertise to properly supervise that position. And traditionally, in most districts, this is a direct report to the Chief Business Official. So, there's, it's just a movement of reporting lines. And a few other things, and I'll get to the Internal Auditor. You have a very talented individual in the Attendance function, and we think that she has capabilities to absorb more, and so, we're recommending that she also have responsibility for student body accounting. Now, when I say responsibility, responsibility for ensuring sites are trained, they understand the rules, coordinating with the auditors to ensure that they're auditing the correct things. ASB is a low-dollar amount for most school districts, but high exposure. And we think that person is already out at the sites, already has relationships with site people, and we think it would be a natural for them to have that responsibility. And we're not recommending any change in the position currently, as far as how it's classified. And then on the far right, the Internal Auditor position. I think if you've ever read a FICMAT, I have never read a FICMAT report that doesn't recommend an Internal Auditor position. And I do have a bias, I used to be one, in a large urban school district, and I see the value that it can add to a school district. And I believe Santa Barbara can benefit greatly from an Internal Auditor position. However, I'm going to, I think you're going to ask me this question. If I were to prioritize, though, I believe the Purchasing Agent is probably the position that we would have the greatest urgency. And obviously, none of this would be for this year, it would be for the following year. We also recommend the establishment of an Audit Committee and a Budget Advisory Committee. Santa Barbara's not alone. A lot of school districts are in crisis right now. It's what the state of California has, is doing to you. And you are in the same boat with a lot of school districts. The only good thing about it, we find that some of the best management-budget practices are born during crisis. When are Budget Advisory Committees born? During crisis. No one thinks about establishing one when things are going well, at least from my observation. Audit Committees, again, a lot of times, it's response to crisis. And again, I would say you're in a crisis, but you're in a crisis in a big boat with the rest of the state of California. And so, these are recommendations we're seeing in a lot of districts, and a lot of districts are doing. And we think this district would benefit by the establishment of these committees. The committees, we believe, should be board committees, having board representation, but also stakeholders, labor, management, parents, other governmental organizations. Those committees tend to work the best. Remember, these would only be advisory committees. You still would have the fiduciary responsibility for operating the district. But it's a good way to get your stakeholders involved and get your message out to the community. And so, we recommend you consider the establishment of these committees. Part of our review, if you recall, I believe it was in January, we were here to give you your first look of what the finances were looking like after the state budget came out. If you recall, January 10th, the governor came out with his proposal that was basically going to decimate education in the state of California, and you were not exempt to that. As you can see, this was the result of our projections. Let me go back for a second. The projections we showed you in January, those were independently developed by School Services. Since that time, we have been working with the district on their multi-year projections. And we came to a conclusion rather quickly. The last thing a board needs is a School Services projection and a District projection, and one's a week earlier, and which one do we use? Which one's right? And we thought we'd be doing you a disservice by handing you two different projections. And so, what we agreed to is we'd work on a common projection. And so, the projection you received and you're operating on now, we went through in fine detail and validated the numbers, and we are on board with that projection. We believe the projections that you're receiving are accurate and timely, but guaranteed to change, because they're all based on assumptions in the future years. We think you now have the information, the best information, to make decisions on. And so, these numbers right here, this is your deficit. And as you can see in '07-'08, remember when I talked about, we've been communicating with the district, a lot of corrective action has occurred already? Your staff has been going through the budget, identifying savings in '07-'08, which is going to help you with your outlook in the future years. And in fact, your situation, at least for '07-'08, as the time we validated your projection, had an improvement of just under $1 million, which we think is significant. And so, you're going to need a multi-year fiscal recovery plan. And this is a time for all your stakeholders to come together, because we believe these are real numbers. These are going to change. The May revision's going to come out in three weeks, and these numbers will change again. And we're hearing all kinds of rumors, could it get better? Could it get worse? Yes. Yes. Both could happen. Best-case scenario, we're hearing that you just won't get COLA. Well, just won't get COLA? That is significant to a district like you. Remember, that COLA you receive every year is just to continue what you're doing from the prior year. And without that COLA, you're having to look at significant cuts, and the fact that you're a declining enrollment district only exacerbates that. And so, the district is in the process of developing a fiscal recovery plan, and I know the board has seen it, and I know you're going to see it later on this evening. But again, you know, districts can respond in two ways. They can either come together with all their stakeholders and say, how are we going to get through this thing that the state is doing to us? That's the best way to proceed. Other districts don't do as well, circle the wagons and start shooting inwards. And that is not the way to do it. This is a time for labor, management, and the community to come together and address this problem that is being done to you. Another part of the review is a comparative analysis, and I don't want to go too over time, so I'm going to go through this rather quickly. Comparing Santa Barbara to other school districts is an extremely difficult task. As you know, you're an elementary school district, you're a high school district. Yes, there are other elementary, high school district common administrations. None of them are your size. One is close, and we've included them in the sample. And because your enrollment patterns are quite different, having a higher population in your high schools compared to your elementary schools made just comparisons a very difficult task. Yet, we still went ahead and did that. And so, we selected other districts that serve the same types of students you did, K through 12, approximately the same size, approximately the same revenue opportunities. And for your reference, these are the districts. Santa Rosa City School Districts is an elementary and a high school district with a common administration. All the other ones are unified districts. Most of them are a lot smaller than you. We were also asked to look at compensation. And, you know, looking at compensation, what's a better comparison? Well, your compensation needs to compete to ensure that you attract and retain quality employees. And so, you don't compete against all those other districts I showed you. When you compete for teacher talent, other talent in the district, you compete with people around you, and these are the districts around you. And I've listed them all out there. You'll see unified districts, elementary districts, high school districts. Well, you compete with all of them. You need that workforce. And so, these would be the districts that we looked at for comparison purposes. So, this first category, this is what you're spending on bargaining unit employees that are certificated. Thank mainly teachers. These are certificated people that are not management. It's a pretty broad category. And as you can see, on a per ADA basis, you're spending more than the average of the other districts. That comparative average is the average of those districts listed. And then the all-unified district is the statewide average. And so, there's a few reasons you're spending more per ADA than other districts. Part of it's the number of people you have, the salaries you pay, but we'll break that down a little further in just a second. As I said, what makes up that other category? How much you pay people, how many you have, and where they sit on your salary schedules. If you're high in seniority, like a declining enrollment district typically is, you'll be paying more. These are average class sizes, and there's something screwy with the graph. The order is correct, and those numbers should be graduating up a little better, and so, I need to check on that. But I can tell you, you have some of the smallest class sizes compared to some other of these districts. There are some anomalies. Remember, you're high on high schools, high school students compared to these other districts. But again, as a district, you have smaller class sizes, which relates into more people, which relates into a larger expense on certificated bargaining units. And so, let me explain one other thing about all these charts. All these charts are dated '06-'07. Why are they '06-'07? That's the last time there's a level playing field in which to compare districts, because you're in '07-'08, you haven't closed your books, not all school districts have finished their negotiations, and so, the base year would be '06-'07. And so, in '06-'07, this is how you ranked against those other districts, which I would call the local districts, at BA 30 Step 1. And this is where you'd ideally like to hire a fully credentialed teacher. This is where you'd like to hire your new teachers. Recognizing that in '07-'08, you gave a 3% salary increase, and '08-'09, you have another one coming up. And so, in '07-'08, I wouldn't expect these rankings to change. In '08-'09, I would expect these rankings to change. Most school districts who have not settled '08-'09 are going to be offering zero, and we think most of their settlements for '08-'09 will be zero. So, if anything, in '08-'09, I would expect you to move up in all the rankings I'm going to show you. BA 60 Step 10, this is a common comparison point between management and labor. It's in a, both sides agree. This is where you look at a mid-career professional teacher. And as you can see, you rank seven out of the 18, and so, you move up a bit. And when you look at this, when you look at the rules of impasse, there's something called comparability. And comparability doesn't mean you need to be number one. Comparability, are you in the ballpark? Are you able to attract and retain employees? And so, ranking seven, I would say, would be comparable. And by the way, in '08-'09, you will probably move up in rankings. And here's the maximum salary. Well, you fall a bit on the maximum salary, but it's the most difficult to compare. You know, BA 30 Step 1, everyone has a BA 30 Step 1. Everyone has a BA plus 60, mid-salary. Top salaries are all over the place. The district I was in, we were beaten up every year because our neighbors paid $10,000 more than we did at the maximum salary. And we did a little investigation, and we found out our teachers hit the max after 20 years with 90 units. Our neighbor hit the max after 40 years in a doctorate. And by the way, we had almost half our teaching force at the top salary. Our neighbor didn't have anybody. And so, these, you really got to dig in. There are districts, there's a district down south that has a 50-year step, and they make it at $120,000, and, you know, but no one ever gets there. It's a hard place to compare. And then we use this as a career earnings to kind of balance out those parts of the salary schedule that people might be playing with if you put a year 50 out there. And so, this is career earnings. This is marching through a new employee through your salary schedule in the same way for every district. It's the same way, and it's agreed upon generally between labor and management. And you can see, for career earnings, you're right in the middle. Okay? And then this is your contribution to health and welfare benefits. Now, this is a, and I'll show you what you're spending on this category in your budget. This is one where I don't think you can just look at dollars alone, because health plans can be drastic depending on geographical area. You can have one district paying $3,000 less than their neighbor, but still getting the same coverage. Maybe they're better at negotiating their benefits. Maybe there's geographical things that affect this dollar amount. And this is where your teacher staff sits on your salary schedule. And you have the characteristics of a declining enrollment district, you're that blue line. And as you can see, that's, the column is the percentage of your people, and across the bottom are the salaries. And you can see, you have that big hump that's kind of edging towards the right. That's a characteristic of a declining enrollment district. The people you have are staying, moving down steps across columns, and you're not bringing in a lot of new people. Okay, so, we went through certificated. This is classified salary expense. This is what you're spending on everybody in the school district that doesn't have a teaching credential. Okay? And again, this is your unrestricted general fund. And as you can see, on a per ADA basis, you're spending less on classified people than other districts, and as a percentage of your budget. But you're right about in the middle. It doesn't mean you're out of line, and it doesn't mean you're wrong. It just means compared to other districts that have some of your same characteristics, this is how you rank. Administrator salary expense, again, another category on a per ADA basis, you're spending less than other districts. And this is one that surprised me a bit, considering, you know, the joint administration status. I would have thought you would have been higher, but you are lower on a per ADA basis, and you're lower on a percentage of budget basis. Employee benefit expense, again, you're spending less. But when you look at this category, it's interesting. The one that's most volatile are health and welfare benefits, because you're paying for retirement out of here, you're paying for payroll-related taxes that you're responsible for, and a lot of those rates are standard throughout the industry. Everyone in the state of California pretty much has the same rates. The big difference is what you're paying on health and welfare benefits. And you are spending less on this category, but again, I would caution you to come to quick conclusions that you're not spending enough. Maybe, in fact, you're better at negotiating health and welfare benefits. Books and Supplies, not a lot of your budget, unrestricted budgets going to books and supplies. This is typical in most school districts. Most school districts use their categorical funds for books and supplies. And so, again, not much of your budget's going to books and supplies, unrestricted general fund. You're below the average of the other districts, and you're below the statewide average. This is one category where I would look at with a skeptical eye. This is what you're spending, what they're called 5,000 accounts. So, utilities are coming out of here, trash, water, but also consultants, attorneys, that sort of thing. And this is an area that you might look at for, as you look at your recovery plan. Now, I will comment on a couple of these things. We noted in our review that there are several things where the district would bring in consultants to do work. And there's appropriate things to bring consultants in, when you want them to evaluate and advise and maybe move on. A consultant that actually comes in and does the work... A consultant that actually comes in and does the work that staff otherwise would do, in the long term, we do not think is a good practice. Because we think you need to have core competencies in the basic operations of your school districts. We think you can do it cheaper with employees. And again, having better systems. One of the things we noted, every year you'd bring in somebody to help with the year-end close. Well, if your systems improve, if your account, if you're three months behind on accounts payable and you hit June 30th, you're going to have to catch up on three months of accounts payable before you can even start the closing process. And so addressing those systems issues will make everything easier. Closing the books will become easier. Forecasting the budget will be easier. And so this is a category that I would scrutinize. And by the way, a lot of things in your recovery plan are in that area. Capital outlay. This is really a small area in most school districts of the unrestricted general fund. Used to be a bigger area, used to charge computers there. Now, the capitalization threshold has risen. And so a very small amount of your budget comes out of this category, like most school districts. This is worth a little commentary. Let me tell you what it is and it isn't. This is just taking your entire unrestricted ending fund balance and dividing it by the number of students you have. It's not, you know, that's your 3%, or and that's your stores and all that. This is just taking the fund balance, dividing by the students, and taking a look at it. And remember, this is entering 06, this is entering this year. This is what you ended up with last year, which is the start of this year. And as you can see, compared to other school districts, you don't have that large of a fund balance. And this is really a difficult thing. A lot of stakeholders do not understand the purpose of an ending fund balance and why you need to have one in the first place, but also why it needs to be sufficient enough to get you through tough times. There are a lot of districts in the state that are having to deal with some of the things that you're having to do. But they have a little more cushion because they're starting out with a bigger ending fund balance. You guys have been taking proactive action on the current year to build your current balance as big as possible. But in the future, this would be an area, just like anything else. You allocate money for salaries, benefits, supplies, services. There might be an allocation in the future for building your ending fund balance to get you through the next crisis that will probably come after this one's resolved. We had over 60 recommendations. Your staff at all levels were very helpful. They were enthusiastic. When we made recommendations on what we thought would improve operations, they were very receptive. Again, a lot of what you're reading in recommendations are already in practice right now. Some of them, like those system issues, are going to take some time. And so that's all I had, and I'll take any questions that you have.
You recognizing me? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your report. I read it with great interest, and I listened with even greater interest.
Okay, thank you.
I had a whole bunch of questions, but let me just go back to your question about position control.
Yes.
And as you talked about it, I recognize the importance of it. But I connected it with what you just talked about, the 5,000s.
Yes.
Contracted services.
Okay.
How do you get position control in the area of contracted services?
How do you get position control in the area of contracted services?
Yeah.
Well, when I talked about implementing systems, position control was one system. But the other system that covers the rest of your budget is your entire procurement process. And again, when we made the recommendations to have a professional purchasing agent, you know, right now, I don't think that you have the manpower to necessarily always ensure that you get your best bang from the buck from some of those consulting services. But I think in the long run, the things that I'm seeing out of line, and by the way, let me say one more thing about the 5,000 line. It is a very volatile line that can expand in one year and decrease in another year. If you go, if you have labor problems and you have outside counsel helping you, you can have a budget buster in your 5,000 account alone. And so I'll respond first by saying it is a volatile line item. But having internal controls and ensuring you get the best bang for the buck, that everything, when you review your budgets, that the consulting lines are appropriate and reasonable. And again, having a system right now where budget transfers can be processed to pretty much any line, I think the only way you get internal controls on those 5,000 lines is having sound business practices in your procurement function. And those should all go through your purchasing department.
Related question. And I've never, I think I understand the logic of it, but I always have trouble applying it in our district. We adopt a budget, and like when you were talking about purchasing, one of the things you said was that this system automatically takes that requisition, checks it off against the budget. I don't sense that we, that what that suggests to me is that the budget is going to control.
Right.
Okay. If there's no budget, you don't buy that.
Right.
If there's not enough in the budget, you don't buy that.
Correct.
Okay. So the budget, the budget rules.
It should, and if your system's operating properly, yes, absolutely.
Unless you transfer some funds.
Well, then there should be controls over transfer of funds. Most districts have board policies on transfer of funds. Certain categories require superintendent approval. Certain categories require CBO approval. Certain categories, because they're minor in nature and allow a school site, let's say, to operate, might only need the principal's approval. But there's typically a hierarchy on what types of budget transfers are allowable by certain individuals by dollar amount.
And is that so this system of things staying within their appropriate budgets works?
Right, ideally.
Is that essential to that mechanism?
Absolutely.
Okay. So really, I think what we have in our district, and I'll ask you, because you've looked at it and know a lot more than I do, do we have control at that level? Does our budget rule? Or are there expenditures going on that are not really related to a budget where in advance, I mean, I can see the whole logic. The board approves the budget. This reflects the priorities for spending. Everybody on the staff stays within those priorities, et cetera. Do we have a tight system for that?
When you say tight, I would, you have procedures with the goal of achieving that. And your procedures.
But do we achieve it?
I'll answer that. They are procedures. They're manual procedures, heavily manual intervention. For instance, right now, a principal orders something. Ideally, he should do an online requisition that will only allow him to access an account that he is authorized to touch. So that's the first check. Second of all, is there any money? And if there isn't, it doesn't go through. And if there is money and he decides or she decides to proceed, that money will then pre-incumber at that stage. So by the time it gets anywhere in the central office, your central office employee doesn't have to take a piece of paper, look on the system and say, well, first of all, can he order from this budget? Second of all, is there money? And by the way, process and turn around and maybe have something slip through. By the time that person gets that in the central office, all that checking has been done. And so you're not relying on somebody in accounts payable to be the internal control as much as it's automated. So every single thing that comes through doesn't require a lot of manual thought and intervention. I wouldn't be getting it unless it was appropriate, is where you want to get. And you can control that through good systems. And then next step, if the principal orders and there's not enough money, you want to shut down the school? Absolutely not. You want to probably give that principal authority to say, I don't have enough money in account A, but I need something out of account A, but I have money in account B. And if the decision tree is that that principal has the authority, they should be able to do an online budget transfer within the guidelines established by the district, dollar amounts and types of transfers, and make that transfer. And so what it does, it gives the sites immediate feedback and control of their budget. You know, a lot of people say, we need site-based management. Well, unless they can kind of control their destiny, it's hard to have site-based management. And so automating a lot of these procedures not only helps the sites manage better, it automates your internal controls, your segregation of duties. And so what happens when they've ordered something from a vendor? The vendor now sends them an invoice. And right now, what happens? They got to go grab the PO and, you know, it's a manual process. When you automate systems, they'll have some of the cleanest desks in the office because they'll have an invoice. They bring it on the system. It should have a PO. Is it okay to pay? You have receiving entering a document saying they received the goods. You know the budget's there, and you know the purchasing agent said this was an appropriate school district purchase. And so by the time that person in the processing function receives the documentation, all those internal controls are in place. And so good internal controls also improve the efficiency of operations with little intervention, if at all. Once the systems are working, you need periodic checks. Is it still working? But once they start working, the improvement in efficiency can be dramatic.
One last question, Madam President. For consultants.
Yes.
Are they budgeted in advance then?
They're in a 5,000 line. It's a line on, I'm sorry, an expenditure.
When we pass the budget, when we approve a budget, will there be something that anticipates needing consultants and putting a certain amount? Anymore, you're going to have to come back, kind of thing?
I'll just tell you what typically happens.
Yeah.
And in your district, every year when you adopt your budget, you have a certain amount of money in the lines I will call the 5,000 lines. And remember, there's also utilities and other things in there. But typically, most districts will know how much they're going to pay their external auditors who are in the 5,000 line. You may, based on historical information, know how much you're going to need in legal services. And a lot of that's in the budget development process. And by the way, we made several recommendations on your budget development process. But that should be done at the adopted budget. Things will occur during the year that you have not anticipated. A significant lawsuit that wasn't on the horizon that you're going to have to defend. And then, again, you should be either augmenting that budget. And in my mind, if you just add money to a budget, that's something that should come to the board in a form of a budget augmentation. If you've delegated authority for budget transfer authority within certain guidelines, well, that may be the way to handle it. And so I guess to answer your question, yes, that's part of the development, budget development process, and it is in there when you adopt your budget.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Just reminding the board, we're a little behind schedule here, but go ahead.
It's not a question that Mr. Gray is going to answer. It's really about next steps. I mean, I thought that the report was extremely complete. It's exactly what I was looking for as a board member when we authorized the expense. So I guess what I'm looking for is what next steps are we going to take? And how are we going to report back on whether or not those steps have been taken?
I was going to ask Mr. Smith to come.
I'd like to comment on that and make a proposal.
I just wanted to add to that question, so you could maybe answer them both at the same time. In the next step, whatever the next step is, at some point, I would like to get some kind of estimate of the cost of these recommendations.
Right.
Because as I think about upgrading the systems, it seems like clearly down the road in the long run, that would be a money-saving strategy. However, in our current fiscal climate, this year and into next, it's difficult to anticipate how we would find that, the funding to put that into place. So I'd like to see maybe some of that come forward with the next steps.
Yeah, there are a number of recommendations that pose further demands on the budget, and the budget is already tight. In fact, we've been studying the 60-plus recommendations. And as you heard, many of those have already been put in place. Eric Smith has them shown directly in the fiscal recovery plan and has those in, has had those in the plan for quite a while. One of the recommendations had to do with new management positions, three new management positions. And this is just in the, in business services. Well, three new management positions could pose considerable demands on the budget. You know, we heard the recommendation for an internal auditor before. I mean, we paid FICMAT to give us that recommendation. Then we didn't ignore the recommendation, but we had very, very tight fiscal restraints at the time. We were negotiating. We didn't want to spend any other money. We never followed up on that. And I think it's all come back to bite us. And I don't think we can ignore a recommendation like that once again. So I do think we need to act on some of these. And what I would propose, and I know Eric has some comments as well, is that we schedule two follow-ups to this. One would be an interim report that would be a presentation to you on the things that we would propose to do on an interim basis because we don't think we can get there all at once. The other would be a much longer-term follow-up on, essentially a progress report on each of the recommendations. And that would be scheduled quite a ways off from now. But it would be taking these items, recommendation by recommendation, telling you what we've done, what progress we've made, and what we still need to do or where we still need to go with them. But I'm particularly concerned, and the reason we scheduled this first, was that we've been waiting for this report. And if we have additional budget demands, then we want to know those right now. And Eric, maybe you can give us some idea of what kind of money we need right now.
Well, I think a couple of things. If you quantify it like I have the positions, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, to basically fully staff all three of those positions. And once again, I recognize the fiscal constraints we're under, but I think that needs to be said. With respect to the progress report and at risk of basically getting myself into drafting another plan, what I've seen is an implementation plan, which basically does what Dr. Sarvis alluded to, which is basically looking at each recommendation and looking at, you know, have we implemented it? Can we implement it? When can we implement it? Are there dollars associated with it? And things of that nature. My experience is that unless you come back with an implementation plan, the plan, this report will languish and die. That's what will happen. So that's something that we could do in the fairly near future, once we get some breathing room. And then the last thing I would like to say is with respect to the internal auditor recommendation, I just want you to know that I was on that FICMAT team that recommended it, and I had no prior knowledge that I was going to be sitting in this seat. So I just wanted to make sure there was no apparent conflict.
In terms of the follow-up, progress report, I'm wondering if, does the board need to take any sort of, I don't know if we need to take formal action, but do we need to agree that we want to follow up on every single one of these recommendations? Do we, or, I mean, because it seems to me that it's some, that it would, if the board doesn't, you know, with all due respect, if the board decided that one of these recommendations wasn't just something we did not think it was appropriate for the district to pursue at this time, I wouldn't want to waste staff's time in coming up with implementation plans.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of issues at hand. One is what the board's direction is. And then there's, John and I had this discussion. There's going to be things, I can't name any specifically, that I might not be, and my staff might not be philosophically aligned with. And so, you know, we've had that. There's going to be some give and take there. So I don't know how the board wants to proceed in that fashion. But I know there's both staff and board input into what kind of implementation plan you'd like to see.
I think the important thing for now is that we need to be sure that we have some money available so that we can pursue and implement. money available so that we can pursue an implementation plan. And whether that's $150,000 or $200,000, we need to know that going into the next report.
Is there a recommendation?
I think at a minimum, you'd need 150. And whether that all comes from unrestricted or if there's other ways to leverage it, we'd have to do our homework, but.
Well, that was actually one of my original questions, which I didn't ask, which was, is there any way for this to come out of restricted funds? Any of these recommendations to be funded through restricted funds?
I think that a portion of the purchasing manager or purchasing agent slash risk manager, there's probably a way, if you allocated some duties to, with respect to workers' compensation, that could hit some of your categoricals on a proportional share basis. I haven't really studied the other ones as much. I mean, I'd have to look at the California School Accounting Manual to see if there's any other way. You know, with respect to an internal auditor, you know, I'm assuming that they also have to audit categoricals, and I'd have to see what CSAM looks at and see if there would be any applicability there. So we, there's some due diligence that needs to be done on our part to see if some of that could be bridged.
Thank you. I think that's, yeah, go ahead, one more last.
Footnote. He said the magic word, the internal auditor. Because you're also recommending an audit committee. Could you, so why do we need an internal auditor if we have an audit committee? Or why do we need an audit committee if we're gonna have an internal auditor?
Well, they're complementary in nature.
They both cost money, right?
The audit committee, except for making copies of what they're going to review, no. Typically, audit committees, an uncompensated board committee, would typically consist of maybe a couple of board members, staffed by your chief business official, possibly have the finance director from a, it's gonna have your stakeholders on it. People with expertise in financial.
Sounds like the budget committee.
Yes.
I'm talking about the audit committee.
It does sound a lot, the difference between an audit committee is they need expertise in financial accounting procedures as they deal with fairly stated financial statements and internal controls. Your budget advisory committee are all your stakeholders, the people who have an interest in, in how things are operated in the district as a customer or as an employee. It's your stakeholders, parents, everybody. Whereas the audit committee is far more technical and focuses on internal controls, fairly stated audit statements, and the efficiency of operations. So you'd want your audit committee to have more expertise in financial operations. And it's typically a volunteer committee. It's considered to be an honor to sit on an audit committee of an organization like yours, typically. The people you ask will be flattered.
I'll quote you.
We'll tell them you said so. Anyone else, last call here. Thank you very much. I wish we had more time with you, another time, I guess.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we're back onto E1. We're already behind, I know. Second reading and approval of the Fiscal Recovery Plan and Budget Cuts.
Well, based on some of the correspondence I've received, I think I need to back up just a little bit. The school district is faced with severe budget cuts due to the governor's budget proposal, although also in part to declining enrollment in the elementary, in the secondary district. We anticipate another 360 students and our enrollment decline in the secondary district. We have a sample letter on the back table. If people in the audience may want to join us, an urging legislatures to save educational funding on the part of the state. You may not have heard, but the board did pass a resolution which we forwarded to the state. We also have an article about what other school districts are doing to meet the budget deficit and fundraising, largely on the part of foundations. That's available on the back table as well. Before Eric Smith, our deputy superintendent, presents the Fiscal Recovery Plan, I'd like to repeat that the origin of the list of potential cuts was a district-wide plea on my part, three months ago, to staff the board. We received some ideas from parents. They were not just offered by the board. They weren't just offered by the administration. It was really a compilation of everyone's efforts, and to that extent, I'm very thankful that our employees, I believe, responded in a very thoughtful way and offered up ideas that could, could present real savings. Together, their efforts, along with Eric's efforts, he put, for next year's budget, he put about $1.4 million on the table with some of these procedural changes, the kind that John Gray just reported on. But altogether, they amounted just on the list of potential cost reductions to some $5.3 million. Well, we knew we needed to hit 4 million if we want to save another $150,000 and set it aside for implementation of this plan, or $200,000 we should. At our last board meeting, the board took one item off the list, and that was additional electives at the junior high level. And that was to the tune of some $570,000, I believe, $577,000. But that still leaves some $4,700,000 of potential cuts just on this part of the list. And the board does have some considerable latitude over making those cuts. I also want to report that thanks to our retirement incentive, we've been able to rescind many of our layoff notices. You know, I signed and we sent out 42 notices. We had 41 retirements. Those aren't necessarily one-to-one because in declining enrollment, declining enrollment hits us across all subject areas, whether it's English, PE, science, whatever. And we don't always get all the retirements in just the subject areas we need. But some of those are also waiting on your decision tonight. And finally, I think it's important that we make it clear that we will be making decisions tonight. This is what we announced to the county. This is what we had intended and were announcing early on. And as soon as we finish our work tonight, we will be starting on our next interim budget report. As the board knows, we're bringing in another budget report back to the board at the May 27 meeting. And, well, we're already working on it, but we'll infuse these cuts as well for our multiple year projection. And with that, Eric Smith, our deputy superintendent, will take us into the changes in this plan.
Before you start, I just want to ask that, we're gonna close the public comments, so if you have a slip, this is going to be your last chance. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. By way of introduction, the board knows that each year, we're required to certify two interim reports to the County Office of Education and the California Department of Education. The first interim fiscal report basically covers the period from July 1 adopted budget, actually through December 31, and we have, or October 31, and we have to present it to the board by December 15. The next, our second interim report is basically from that period through January 31, and we have to present it by March 15. In each interim report, we have a choice of either certifying a positive, that means that we can meet our current and subsequent two-year fiscal obligations, a qualified, that we can maybe meet our current and subsequent two-year fiscal obligations, or a negative, that we definitely cannot meet our current and subsequent two-year fiscal obligations. The first interim report, which was presented to the board at December 15, based on confluence of factors, including declining enrollment and some other variables, we certified that we are qualified. We certified qualified on the basis that we showed a structural deficit of roughly $1.5 million in fiscal year '08-'09, which would compound into fiscal year '09-'10 if it was not addressed. After the governor unveiled his proposed '08-'09 budget, those multi-year projections that showed a structural deficit of $1.5 million ballooned to $6.5 million. So looking at our ending balance, our beginning balance of this year, our ending balance of last year, we noted that we had enough in fund balance to basically not make all the cuts in one year, the whole 6.5. But we knew that we'd have to make at least 4 million to basically keep above the 3% reserve level, which is required by the state of California and monitored by the County Office of Education. When we certified negative, the county office, basically exercising their authority under AB 1200, required us to do a number of things. And probably the most important one was to develop a plan that showed expenditure reductions that would bring our expenditures in alignment with revenues on a multi-year basis. Hence, the birth of the Fiscal Recovery Plan. The Fiscal Recovery Plan is really, in my mind, a two-year document, although we have to deal with a lion's share of the pain in this year going into '08-'09. Rather than going through the entire Fiscal Recovery Plan, line by line, like I did last time, I'm just going to go to where the changes have made. There've been a significant number of additions between the original reading on April 8. Some of those are adds, some of them are revisions. They are all underlined in the document. So I'm just going to address my comments with respect to the underlying portions of the plan, and then let the board deliberate and take public hearing as appropriate. I think the first thing I want to call to the board's attention is on page five. A couple of plan assumptions were added. The first one is that the multi-year projections that we're using in the plan contemplate that there is a salary increase embedded in the multi-year for certificate of classified and management. That is nothing new to the board. That was reported at first and second interim report, but we're memorializing that it is contemplated in the plan. I'd also like to call to the board's attention, the next plan assumption is that certain items contained in the plan are negotiable and will require the cooperation of our employee associations to implement. In the event that the board approves these recommendations and we fail to negotiate their implementation, the board will need to adopt additional measures to reduce expenditures and/or enhance revenues equal to the dollar value of those items that could not be negotiated. I know that's long-winded, but it basically says we have a target, and if we can't achieve savings through negotiated items, there's gonna be other things that need to be put back on the table. On items on page seven, a change here is that because of our negative certification, when we started talking to Piper Jaffrey, who's our financial advisor, in terms of participating in their pooled trans for tax and revenue anticipation notes, it was no longer economically beneficial to go with them. So we started talking to others, and there is a local pool that's gonna be comprised of the Galita School District, Santa Maria High School District, and then us, and it basically was much more favorable. So under the cash management portion, I put that in there, and I believe there's an action item later in the agenda to approve that tax and revenue anticipation. As we move into the fiscal year reductions and revenue enhancements for '08-'09, a couple of things that came to light between April 8 and April 22. One is that SIS II notified us that even though we were gonna achieve a significant savings, the rates actually decreased, I think largely due to member pressure to decrease the rates, given the fiscal constraints that everybody was under. So we were able to achieve an additional $67,000 for our total savings over last year of $145,213 in property and liability insurance. And that would be, Dr. Noel, in the 5,000s, I might add. The other issue is that the board will recall that we had an accounting adjustment where we were adjusted for the receipt of redevelopment revenue and put it in a restricted account. We were hanging on to it to figure out what we were going to do before it was falling into 8699, other local income, and just washing into the unrestricted. Well, it is restricted for educational facilities, so we're taking a conservative estimate of how much we'll receive next year. And since it's received in the secondary district, we can make that or attribute that to our deferred maintenance transfer. So that frees up $75,000 roughly. That wasn't on the April 8 reduction list. We've clarified the potential administrative reductions on page 14. I think one of the issues there is that it looks like we will have one of these administrative positions staff for three months of the next fiscal year, so we wanted to be transparent about that. And that's illuminated on page 14. On page 16, we clarified that our issue with the ninth grade class size reduction is a mechanical industry standard issue. I mean, if I could eliminate all encroachments in all programs that required unrestricted contributions, I mean, well, nobody else has been able to do that, so I'd probably just retire. But, but I mean, that is the goal. There's a significant contribution from the unrestricted general fund in ninth grade class size reduction. That's why it's being contemplated. Staff all comprehensive high schools at parity. You can see that we re-looked at that, Dr. Sarvis, Mr. Turnbull. We all looked at the calculations in terms of what it would actually generate. There's a slight increase there based on April 8, but since the language has changed, we just underlined the whole paragraph. I think one of the significant changes is on page 17, is our revised number of savings for certificate of retirement incentive. I believe we had about $240,000 estimated in the last version of the plan. These are actual numbers, 345,744. We're very happy about that. We also clarified, and I believe there's an errata sheet that's in the back with respect to replacing retired certificate of librarians with media techs. We actually looked at who actually retired, and we had to basically adjust those numbers accordingly. That's item E1. That's actually the wrong one. There's a, there's a page in the back. As we move forward, we basically looked at Saturday School. We noticed that on page 19, Saturday School seems to be very effective at Santa Barbara High School, where it's being used not only for disciplinary reasons and truancy, but also for recapturing ADA. We think that that program should be expanded to the other two comprehensive high schools. Although we recognize that basically there's a lower attendance rate, so there's a greater room for improvement at Santa Barbara High Schools as compared to the others, but we still think it should be done nonetheless. When we get into the additional analysis in the long-term health section, starting on page 20, basically, one of the issues that surfaced was the lease of 720 Santa Barbara Street. We did some checking. We know there's a 200, basically $2.65 per square foot per month is actually the lease rate that we, that we've, were able to identify. Those were as figures were of January. So that was underlined. On page 29, or 23, I'm sorry, implement Pur's Golden Handshake. We have worked with CSEA, and we have submitted a survey, circulated it to interested members, and I believe that we'll be receiving the final responses as of this Friday. I think we already had 23 respondents. There was a request to put reduced board compensation back on. We did that. We basically identified the statutory authority for boards to receive compensation. That's listed there. Eliminated coordinators, special projects. That was requested. We put that on there and basically put our rationale for why we think that position should be retained. There was a comment, I believe, at the last board meeting with respect to analyzing parent pay transportation and the feasibility of implementing it within the district. I think one of the issues that's problematic there is that, one, is there's really a small amount of encroachment in the elementary, about $115,000. And given the regulations relative to exemption from parent pay fees, which basically correlate to free and reduced lunch counts, given that there's about 65% of the elementary that's eligible, we think there'd be a large percentage that would be exempt from parent pay fees. So we don't know how that would actually calculate out. There's a discussion on 25 relative to converting year-round elementary schools to traditional On 26, something that we've already embarked on, implementing a new homeschool program. We know that it's going to generate or retain ADA. We just don't have exact figures at this point in time. There was a request of looking at eliminate subsidy for reduced fee for metropolitan district. We analyzed that as well. We analyzed that as well. Rent or at Tega Street campus, it's currently vacant. You can see, once again, we identified that the commercial lease rate is $2.65 per square foot per month with a vacancy rate of 2.4%. We have about 17,570 square feet here. You can see it's a significant amount of money. The only issue there is how fast you could get a tenant in there, so that would be a timeliness issue. There was also a request to analyze eliminating athletic trainers at each comprehensive high school. If you eliminated all three, the aggregate amount would be $145,725. Once again, a lease issue. Relocate Parma Children's Center to an existing school site and lease Montecito Street property. We, using the same lease figures, we think we could generate about $101,283. However, we don't know where their end destination would be, and there would also be site development and portable lease costs associated with that move that are quantified on page 27. On page 28, it's considered but would probably not yield cost savings. We have a couple of things on here. One is on page 30, is a two-year moratorium on CSBA dues. Even though it might generate a savings in the short term, I think the things that we saw problematic with it were, one, is that's our access to our board policies through GAMET. So, that would actually be off the table as well if we basically disengage from CSBA. Obviously, if the board wanted to do that, that would be a savings probably above 168676, because I believe there's an additional fee for GAMET as well. And then, on page 31, there was basically a proposal from CSEA to look at furlough days. Based on our analysis, furlough days would basically save about $60 per day in unrestricted dollars. As you can see from the write-up, one of the things that we're uncomfortable with is basically kind of the one-size-fits-all approach and how it might reduce organizational capacity. We'd rather take a more surgical approach and work with CSEA collaboratively and look at where we're overstaff versus understaff and basically systematically deal with those issues. And we're in continuous dialogue with CSEA and appreciate their problem solving in this regard. Then lastly, on page 32, we memorialize the April 8th board action of removing the junior high electives. That's off the list. And then, on pages 33 and 34, basically a summary of both the '07-'08 and '08-'09 line items. So, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of an abbreviated presentation.
Before you finish, let me also offer that the final table has been sequenced in the very same way. The only amount that would change on this is for V, replace retiring certificated librarians with media technicians. That would not be $122,000. That would be 108.
285.
285. And that would give you a new balance of 4,723,036. So, 4, 7, 2, 3, 0, 3, 6 would be the new balance.
You went through those very fast. I was wondering if you could elaborate on just two of them, if that's okay? The librarians and San Marcos block system.
Well, those are really not my strong suit, so Brian, why don't you elaborate on the block, and then I'll do my best on the librarians.
Well, the block is really not about the block at all. Regardless of what you've heard, it's really about parity and funding for staffing at our high schools. The difference that the current formula, which has been in use since Mike Caston's days, brings us is some difference in staffing that amounts to $640,000 more in staffing San Marcos than the other high schools, given a comparable number of students. I understand, I've received no official word, but I understand that San Marcos staff has taken up this issue, and I believe they are offering to move their class ratios. Lane, maybe you could address that. We need some clear final word on that. And if that's the case, I compliment them and thank them.
There was some preliminary discussion about that, and I know that the staff at San Marcos is working on that. I don't believe there's any definitive response, and so, at this point, I'm going to defer to some of the San Marcos staff if you would like to hear from them on where they are with that now. I don't know if that's the pleasure of the board, but there are San Marcos staff here who I think are ready to speak on that issue, so I'll leave it to you.
Well, I'm sure they've gotten speaker slips, and we're going to hear from them. Is that correct? Okay, so we'll hear about that. How about the librarians?
And the librarians, if you'd like to refer to the yellow highlighted revision. There we go. Yes, good.
So, the issue there is there's a retirement at one of the high schools and one of the junior highs, and that's the replacement issue is applicable to those. And then, the write-up kind of talks about the mechanics of it, which is up on the...
I just have a real quick question on the eliminate subsidy for reduced fee for metropolitan transit district passes. How do we work with MTD on this? Obviously, they have a student fair, but do we negotiate any special rates for our low-income students, or is it just a...
We subsidize the normal bus pass of 750, and we actually, the subsidize is 550, so we absorb the difference.
Have we talked to MTD about that?
Not to my knowledge.
No, just a question. Would board members prefer to have discussion, or would we rather go to public comment first?
I was thinking we'd go to public comment. What do others want?
Public comment. Sounds good to me.
I can't see Ms. Cordero. I can't see it. Okay, let's start. We have quite a number. We took about an hour and a half, hour and a quarter maybe, last time, so we're looking at another, probably an hour of comments at least. So, we're going to limit to two minutes. Please keep your comments to two minutes, and Ms. Parker will tell you when your time is getting up. Thank you.
I will give you a 30-second warning as the time runs down, but I will also call three speakers at a time so that you can be ready when your turn is coming up. So, first up, we have Elizabeth Cutberth, followed by Paul Rainbolt, followed by Emma Steinkellner, I believe. So, Elizabeth Cutberth, are you here? No? All right, then it's Paul Rainbolt, followed by Emma Steinkellner, followed by Daniel Richmond.
Good evening. My name is Paul Rainbolt, and I'm a 7th grader Goleta Valley Junior High student. I've been informed on the 8th of April, there was a meeting, and at that meeting, you published a list of cuts to lower the current amount of expenditures in the Santa Barbara School District. I am here for one and one only reason, and that is to speak of the wonderful, hard-working librarians we have working at our schools. On my first day of school, I walked onto that campus as a gate student, as a reader, a 12-year-old, and someone who did not have that many friends. I was scared, but then something happened. It was just like a lone star out of the night sky. It was the GV library. I walked in and immediately fell in love with the books, the setup, and the librarian. I thought, oh, she's probably busy, so I can't ask where a book is. Suddenly, Ms. Farrell came to me, introduced herself, asked me how she could help, and from that moment on, I knew we would be friends. Mrs. Hill, also another behind-the-scenes worker and another friend, acts the same way towards me. As the year progresses, I notice something. They continue to act the same way, but continue to work harder and harder. For the same price as a teacher, you get 110% more. Not only is our librarian nice, helpful, and they run a great library, but they are also way more. Ms. Farrell is a credential teacher, a technology instructor, and a consultant. She's a standard-based collaborator, a knowledgeable selector of books, and a trainer of software, et cetera. So, please choose not to cut the librarians. If this does not convince you enough, then here is a petition from students and teachers to save the librarians.
Thank you. I want to just double-check that Elizabeth Cutberth is not here. Okay, I'm going to move on then to Emma Steinkellner, followed by Daniel Richmond, followed by Helen Murdock.
Hi, I'm Emma Steinkellner, and I am also a student at Goleta Valley Junior High and 8th grader. You could say I'm speaking on behalf of the librarians, but I think I'd say that I'm more speaking on behalf of the students, because every student who loves to read usually has a great librarian behind them who encourages them, supports them. And having worked in the library this year as a student assistant, I've seen how much work that Ms. Hill and Ms. Farrell put into the library, and it is astounding that even with two amazing women who work pretty much all day, the stuff just barely gets done because there's so many things to do. Anyway, it's, in the year 2008, it's hard to find something that isn't based electronically. And I like to think that some things never change, and I like to think that one of those things is the library, and that that can be a place where the one thing that guides you to a new favorite book is a smiling face, because not all librarians, and most of them aren't ladies who come up to you and go, shh. And I've learned that the easy way.
30 seconds.
By having great librarians like Mrs. Farrell and Ms. Hill. And I know time is limited, so I'd like to close there. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Daniel Richmond, followed by Helen Murdock, followed by Ramona Martin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Daniel Richmond, and I'm a 7th grader at Goleta Valley Junior High. I speak in reference to the proposed budget cuts on librarians. As a student myself, I know firsthand the value of our Goleta Valley Junior High librarian. Her name is Ms. Farrell. She makes the library, you know, a place I want to go every day. It's a truly wonderful place. And, you know, it's, as Emma said, it's nice to think that we can, that there will always be books in a great library with great librarians, and that's something that's one of the best parts to me about my school. So, I know I express the feelings of many students when I say that I think that we should reconsider cutting the librarians. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just interject one little thing? Is that on our list, nowhere is Goleta Valley Junior High's librarians. That's not a possible cut. That's not one of the things that are listed, so I just wanted to let you all know that.
Helen Murdock, followed by Ramona Martin, followed by Maggie Mason.
That's a hard act to follow. My name's Helen Murdock, and I'm a teacher at San Marcos High School, and I know that you have many difficult decisions ahead of you in terms of how to save millions of dollars for the upcoming school year. We all wish there could be no budget cuts so that our students have the best possible education, but I know that's not a reality. However, I only want to speak to one cut you're considering, which is not replacing the two retiring library media teachers at La Cumbre and San Marcos. Each of these two schools will suffer greatly without a credentialed teacher librarian on staff. The faculty and staff at La Cumbre have worked extremely hard over the past few years to pull themselves out of program improvement and have shown that they can do it. San Marcos faculty and staff are also working tirelessly to prove not only test scores, but our daily educational experience for our students. To take the valuable resource of the library media teacher away from these schools would be in shame and an insult. Effective library teachers don't just check out books. They teach technology, information literacy, and a love of reading. They consult with the classroom teachers on standards-based lessons, review and select the materials for the library collection, and they work with a variety of groups on campus to ensure professional development opportunities and resources for students and teachers alike. I do actually have a personal stake in this decision. Last year, I finished my library media teacher credential and was kind of hoping that when a vacancy occurred, that I might be able to step into that. And I was a summer school librarian two years ago at San Marcos, and it was amazing. Kids would come in who didn't like to read. I would talk to them about books, suggest something, and they would come back in a couple of days and say, what can I read next? I mean, that's exciting, to be able to teach them how to understand fact and fiction on the internet. I just think that you're dooming kids to having no librarian from K through 12 who go through La Cumbre and San Marcos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ramona Martin, followed by Maggie Mason, followed by Sylvia Gutierrez.
Hello, I'm Ramona Martin. I'm the librarian at La Colina Junior High, and I, like Helen, am also disturbed to think that children, when they enter the Santa Barbara School District, would not have a credentialed librarian, the personal touch of a credentialed librarian from kindergarten through 12th grade with the scenario that you're proposing. The scenario that I see you proposing has five libraries with library media teachers, credentialed teachers. And if Mr. Hatt Yunk will put on the screen a document that we've shown the board in March, and we've shown you again in April, of all the things that you get for your money with a library media teacher, a credentialed teacher, these are our powerhouse tools that we go to bat for our teachers and our students every day in our libraries. And you can see some of the testaments to the children who are out here. With your scenario, you would have two schools who would have no credentialed teacher librarian, no technology instructor consultant, as we are to our students and staff. You would have no information literacy teacher guiding kids through safe websites and organizing and creating web quests and pathfinders for knowledge. You would have no standards-based collaborator. We frequently meet with PLCs, with departments, and organize making sure standards are covered in our lessons. You would have no one who would be a knowledgeable reviewer of books and materials to make sure children's educations, the reluctant readers, the avid readers, and all the kids in between who would be ordering books for these kids, reading the reviews and ordering. You would have no liaison for all these committees that we serve on our staffs. Where the ARIES people on our staffs, where the EDU-SOFT people on our staffs, where the district IT liaisons. I just, it just goes on and on. You would have no full-time professional person who's responsible for the management of all the library materials and the textbook materials. And last time, we said hundreds of thousands of dollars with our automated systems of tracking things. I pushed a button the other night. We can't do our tally between 8 and 3, but on the weekend, last weekend, I pushed the button for my school, and I found out I have over a million dollars in assets at my school. And I can only assume that San Marcos has two to three million dollars of assets.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin.
What, 30 seconds?
No, no, you're over 30 seconds at this point.
Ooh, I have to go to the good part. Wait, I have a solution.
Okay.
The solution is Helen, who was here. The solution are three credentialed teachers in our district, one of whom has, besides Helen, has a credential. The other two are willing to start working on their library credentials next week to apply for the La Cumbre jobs. We have solutions. Don't kill good programs, and don't be dollar foolish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie Mason, followed by Sylvia Gutierrez, followed by Michael McLaughlin.
I wanted to compliment those wonderfully articulate students from Goleta Valley, and I hope to see you soon at DP. I'm here to speak in favor of retaining the class size reduction for 9th grade, and you've all heard from me before, and I've sent you emails, and so I thought you might want to hear from my students, so I'm going to read a few notes. This is from Jessica, and they gave me permission to say their names and their grades. Jessica Arzate, being in a small 9th grade English class... Jessica Arzate, "Being in a small ninth-grade English class helps me learn more, and I like it because everyone can get individual help." This girl raised her grade from a C minus to a B. This is Barbara Lopez. "I like having small classes because it means more one-on-one time with students and teachers. Because if a student doesn't understand a concept, then the teacher can come over and spend more time with a student on learning. C to an A." "Being in a smaller classroom has benefited me as a student in many ways," says Melanie Rogers. "Being with less people makes the lessons more personal and easier to improve my writing skills. With less students, it is less hard for Ms. Mason to give more personal attention to each individual student. If you want to continue hard-working classes, then don't make the classes bigger. C plus to A plus." Joanne Lopez, "Hardcore. Being in a small English class has helped me in many ways. I was pushed to be a more responsible student, and I went from not caring what my grade was in English to actually knowing what it was like to care if you had a B, D, or a B in English class." She raised her grade from D to C plus. Anna Delgado raised her grade from F to C minus. "I wouldn't get as much help from Ms. Mason if there were thirty-five students in a classroom, and because I was able to be in a small class, I got as much help as I needed to get my grade up." Smiley face. Stephanie Khan, F to B minus. "My ninth-grade English class only holds twenty students. The environment is small and peaceful. It's easier for me to concentrate, and my teacher, Mrs. Mason, gets along with all of us and makes sure we all get work done. She gives us all individual attention." So listen to these voices, please. And I, there are more, and can I leave them with you?
Please.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sylvia Gutierrez, followed by Michael McLaughlin, followed by Christina Aguirre Cole.
Hi, I'm the health assistant at Cleveland School for ten years, and I have two scenarios to present if a health assistant is not there six hours a day that students are. One, a kindergarten student takes Ritalin at eight AM in the morning before the nurse, the health assistant gets there. She's at a meeting. The child comes in at ten-ten. He takes the medication well past the window of one hour that this medication should not have been given. If I had not come back at ten-forty-five to correct the next dose, this child would have been giving the medication at twelve PM, resulting in a possible overdosing of a child with Ritalin. That is one thing that office staff, they are experienced minimally to assist us, but to do it on a day-to-day basis for several hours at a time could be a dangerous situation for children. Scenario two, a first grader comes in with asthma. The teacher's bringing him in. He's got chest pains. He's having trouble breathing. The secretary has to go to the, get the key, get the medication out, get the tubing out, put it together. She's fumbling around. The kid is pounding his chest because he's panicking. She's putting the medication together. Sometimes there's two medications that go in once. Sometimes it's already pre-measured. She has to sit with the student for the full ten minutes that the medication is dispensing.
Thirty seconds.
She has to make sure with the peak-flow monitor afterwards that he is in a safe zone. He blows in here three times, and if things don't go well, she'll have to call 911. You are not always guaranteed that the nebulizer will help the child out of the situation. To expect a office staff personnel who is not conditioned to working in this situation is a hazard to the health and safety of Santa Barbara School District children.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Michael McLaughlin, followed by Christina Aguirre Cole, followed by Laura, I'm sorry, it's difficult. Larios, maybe?
I have no idea how I'm going to get through this in two minutes, so I'm going to try and go quickly. First, I'm only speaking for myself, not the entire staff. Been moving really quickly on these issues and haven't had a chance to get stamps of approval on anything. Second, to clarify an earlier issue, our staff, union, card-carrying members voted to hold a vote, so we went through the first step of the process to potentially look at class size increases. And we are in a position to do that, depending on how things fare out. First thing I want to note is, good job on your paragraph this time with respect to the numbers. I think a lot of the stuff is erroneous, but the numbers are more or less correct. The disparity in formulas is, I got about eight-point-four, you had eight-point-two. It's fine. What I really want the board to understand, though, is that, I guess this is what they called position control. We had a position control problem this year. And because of the position control problem, San Marcos was actually staffed an additional three-point-eight FTEs above our formula. So if you approve what's on the, the form, we aren't cutting four-point-one FTEs, we're cutting seven-point-six, would be my effective number because enrollment's going down. Seven-point-six FTEs is about fifty sections off our master schedule. That's too much, in my opinion, in one year, even if we do increase class size. Too much to manage, and quite possibly not within instructional minutes. And if we stay at thirty-one, if we hold to our contract, I'm, I'm positive you won't meet instructional minutes. So if you flip this over really quick.
Could you flip that for me?
Yeah, flip that over. Basically, what I'm hoping is, up there is my minimum instructional minute calculation, which is stretching it to the limit. Right here is basically what you've proposed. Take the formula, subtract four-point-one FTEs, and based on our current enrollment, that would be sixty-nine. What I'm hoping is that you can find a way to shift two of those four that you're going to subtract to categorical funding. And I don't know if it's possible. I don't know, I don't know the ins and outs of that. But if, short of that happening, I suggest the board vote this down, or vote maybe to do two of those four right now, and then postpone the other two till later. Because otherwise, you're voting to approve something that currently, with our current contract, does not meet instructional minutes.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Okay, sorry.
We have to keep going on. And it is Christina Aguirre Cole, followed by Laura, I think, Larios, and then Juan Gallardo.
I'm here to speak to you regarding the proposal to cut five school psychologists from our current team of eighteen. I believe when you understand the psychologist's role in this district, you'll reexamine this proposal. School psychologists are vital in this school district, so I need to back up. Here are the majority of the duties covered by school psychologists in your school district. We work with quantity, not necessarily in scope. We also work with more, with the students, not just with numbers. California Ed Code states that the state has continually sought to provide an appropriate and meaningful educational program in a safe and healthy environment for all students, regardless of possible physical, mental, or emotional disability conditions. So that is our role. It's outlining it for us. So we have to deal with school violence, mental health issues, academic failure, dropout, crisis intervention, and RTI. If you look on the national scale, we have this to consider, that school psychologists are responsible for. On a local scale, we have gain prevention. And city council is working right now to make sure that they are preventing this as well. But we can't just cut one and expect the city council to cover us as well. We need to continue doing the work in the schools. We also have federal mandates. All of these mandates require that we work, and work within timelines, so that we don't have to deal with lawsuits, which potentially could cost the, this school district millions of dollars, which means then it isn't a savings of money at all.
Thirty seconds.
I also wanted to talk about all these other areas that we work with, making sure that we're covering our students so that we can keep our special education numbers down, so that special education services are valued. Lastly, we're gatekeepers. I just mentioned that. We serve the students when properly placed. Services are not wasted or reproduced. And correction to statistics, currently, right now, we're not at one to nine-hundred. We have three psychologists on leave. So we are somewhere between one to one-hundred to one to two-thousand-and-eighty, and I'd like to say I'm the one at one-thousand to two-hundred-and-eighty at this point right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Larios.
Can we switch?
Sure. Juan Gallardo?
Yeah. Hi, I'm one of the school psychologists, bilingual school psychologist, and, you know, I just, I wanted to just share with you guys that, that part of the compliance issue that we face is, or that we, sorry, that, that I'm here to talk about is basically that, you know, the National Association of School Psychologists recommends that, that psychologists work with one for every one-thousand students. And this is best practice to follow, particularly because when you increase the ratio, the quality of services are simply harder to deliver. And the more schools served by one school psychologist, the more, the more challenging it is to provide quality services. Also, we're here to ensure that FAPE is being offered to students who have a learning disability, or any type of disability. And also, this also includes our kids who are in private school, and we also provide services to these schools. And I know it, it, for example, it wasn't taken into consideration that, that we all, we serve eighteen private schools at this school, I mean, at this school district. Also, we, we help to avert high-stake lawsuits, or IEPs, through maintaining personal relationships with parents, through be, through attending more IEPs to facilitate and answer parental concerns, through interface with, between parents, schools, and advocates. And again, just making sure that we meet guidelines, eligibility factors, FAPE offers, and that paperwork is met in compliance with IDEA. Another thing is that, like I said before, is meeting the special education timelines, the services, counseling in particular, that we write behavior support plans for students. We're trained as behavior intervention case managers, and we also provide non-verbal, non-violent crisis intervention. And most importantly, these proposed five cuts would reduce our staffing by twenty-five, twenty-nine percent. So, and we're already working at more than maximum capacity.
Thank you. Laura Larios, followed by Melissa Perez, followed by Larry Green.
I'm Laura Larios. I'm one of the bilingual school psychologists for the Santa Barbara School Districts. And I'm here to tell you about some of the considerations that I'm sure you have been hearing about regarding bilingual, the assessment of bilingual students in the Santa Barbara School District. Currently, the district's population, Hispanic population is at seventy percent of the students. And with the six bilingual school psychologists that we currently have, we're covering about eighteen-hundred students each. Of course, not all of these students are English learners, but over half of them are, and they all come from homes where Spanish is the first language. Communication with a parent by a bilingual school psychologist definitely facilitates the process. Legal considerations also to, to keep in mind is both California Ed Code and US Code that tell you that testing and assess, and assessment materials need to be done, assessment need to be conducted by qualified persons, and that the pupil's native language needs to be part of this process. In other words, the students need to be assessed in the native language. The native language is the language they first learned. Materials also needs to be administered so that there is no, that minimizes the risk of racial, cultural, or sexual discrimination. Financial considerations is that we're looking at if we are not able to cover the needs of the district, because we just, we'll have three bilingual psychologists rather than six. This will require possibly contracting out a daily rate, or a case rate, rather, of eighteen-hundred dollars approved, and a, the psychologists can complete evaluations in two days. The, the district psychologists can complete one evaluation in two days. So the savings there is significant. Also, we are better able to monitor interventions and accurately identify special education students because we have been able to ascertain when a student may be learning disabled, or actually maybe just being, his academic progress may be impacted due to his second language acquisition process.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Larios.
Thank you.
Melissa Perez, followed by Larry Green, followed by Rita Newhouse.
Good evening. My name's Melissa Perez. I am a counselor at Santa Barbara High School, and I'm here to talk to you about how we should retain our school psychologist. We currently have three school psychologists working with the counseling office. Every single day, they help us with our students with referrals to outside community resources, our cutters, our suicidal students, our gang members, our 504 plan students, our social worker communications, and our truant students. I could go on and on. Every single day, our school psychologists are a part of our counseling team in the counseling office. I just want to bring, bring it to your attention that when that young man was killed on State Street, our school psychologists went into action. They were leaders, they were facilitators, and there were organizers in our office to, to assess that situation and how to help our student population that was very affected by it. Without them, that, that may have not been addressed as it should have. They stood up, they were leaders, and they really addressed the issue with our office. Without them, it wouldn't have been so helpful. So I just want to say that. Thank you.
Okay, Larry Green, followed by Rita Newhouse, followed by Woody Barrett.
My name is Larry Green. My thanks to the board for the opportunity to speak. I have a daughter in the eleventh grade, and she has had great benefits from school psychologists at Santa Barbara High School. Let me rewind a bit. Fifty years ago, I went to high school, and life was simpler in those days. We didn't have a school psychologist where I went to school. Neither did we have gangs, or drugs, or weapons at school. We had none of the complications that we're all facing in this society here in the year of 2008. A lot has changed, and now we have students confronted with all kinds of distractions and difficulties that they have trouble managing. I know because I'm raising one of those students. Certainly, the internet has brought new perils to student population. My daughter was addicted to MySpace and YouTube, and finally, we have controlled that with help from the psychologists at Santa Barbara High School. So we must have dedicated and professionally-trained professionals who can really manage the problems that our student population is confronted with today. Now, I understand that budget cuts are necessary. We all are very aware of that. But I respectfully request that this board considers looking at cuts in other areas. I believe the school psychologists are mission-critical, or that's what the military would call it, mission-critical to the health and the educational success of our students.
Thirty seconds.
Again, I thank the board for the opportunity to speak.
Rita Newhouse, followed by Woody Barrett, followed by Kathy Abney.
Good evening. I'm a special ed teacher, and I want to first speak on the proposed cuts regarding the program specialist position, and then on the removal of the five school psychologists. The program specialists greatly assist the special ed teachers and the school administration with federally mandated duties in order to remain compliant by law. How many of you agree there is not enough time in the day to finish all you want to do? This program specialist allows tasks to be streamlined, to avoid too many cooks in the kitchen regarding paperwork, allows for maximum use of time to teach and case manage, the most important job for the special educator. These program specialists handle many difficult situations before they get out of hand. How can you put a dollar amount on a conversation that calms down a frustrated parent, oh, and keeps them from expressing their rage in the form of a lawsuit? How can you put a dollar amount on the security that teachers, counselors, administrators have in their program specialist as the go-to person for special ed? Program specialists take care of what needs to be done regarding compliance by managing the site's special ed issues that arise daily. They are worth every penny. Secondly, I have witnessed the effects of this district being down three school psychologists. I can't imagine what it would be like if five were removed. Students are not receiving all of their federally mandated counseling as it is. There's just no time. Fires are being put out left and right, but many more are stirring.
Thirty seconds.
If these positions are cut, you put our district in further danger of being non-compliant, resulting in legal issues that perhaps could have been avoided had staffing of program specialists and psychologists been in place. Thank you.
Woody Barrett, followed by Kathy Abney, followed by Kirk Taylor.
Thank you for letting me talk in front of you. We have the only hearing-impaired student at Santa Barbara High School. She's been diagnosed ADHD. I just did some quick numbers on special ed and the psychologist. And the psychologist, page 14, 94,000, this ratio to 360, and that number you have with the superintendents, taking that .75 FTE factor. Page 16, 433,000. Page 17, 298,000. Psychologist, 428,000. That's 1,253,000 out of your 4.7 million. That's 26.45% of your budget is special ed that you're cutting. As far as a psychologist, we have a gifted son, went to MUS, Santa Barbara Junior High now, and he saw a psychologist, and he is not specially handicapped in any way. And so I think this number may be skewed because these psychologists work with lots of different children. And Ms. Newhouse referred to some raging parents, or one of them. There are not enough instructors and assistants in the classes now to help the children that are in there. You said you spent $30 million on five elevators. If you'll refer to page 29. In 29, you said you want to reduce legal fees. And one of those things is resolving special education claims. If you reduce these staffs, we're not a litigated bunch, but I'm sure there's some people out there that are, you might want to counterbalance those two measurements because it may come out about equal in the long run. We had to hire a tutor for Allison because there just wasn't enough people to help her in the classes. And we are able to do that. But there are children in those classes can't afford that. And this is pretty dear to our hearts. So in any case, I could go on with more stats. I didn't have it about 30 minutes to prepare this. But I think some of these cuts are not needed. It's tough to say where you're going to cut. We moved here seven years ago. Of course, my office is in Houston, so I still have a Texas accent, I talk to it every day. We've had to do budget cuts. It's tough to find a place. You're going to have to really take a look at these federally mandated things, even though you say there's an increase in enrollment of children with disabilities.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Okay.
We have to move on to the next, but thank you. Kathy Abney, followed by Kirk Taylor, followed by Luke. And I'm sorry, it's hard to read the last name. It might be Ohon.
Maybe Orin.
Orin, thank you.
Just to clarify, that's $5.4 million for six elevators.
Community.
That the community paid for out of facilities, construction money. Yes.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Abney, principal of La Cuesta. I want to thank you for your time and the difficult decisions you'll have to make tonight. I'm here to urge you to consider the well-thought-out move of the two La Cuesta campuses to the Ortega site at no cost to the district. This move will provide equity for an underserved student population, offering grade-level instruction in the core subjects, rather than a cookie cutter, one-size-fits-all model of instruction, elective courses, a central location for the delivery of sports services, and an opportunity for students to experience high school as it should be. Prior to 1985-1986, La Cuesta was housed in a number of locations, but always on a single site. In 1985-1986, La Cuesta students were placed in four locations throughout the community because the district once again needed the McKinley site for an elementary school. I actually was hired that year. So locating continuation students on a single site has been done in this district, and it has been done very successfully. As we are currently located, our students do not have access to libraries, a broad range of elective courses, physical education facilities, athletics, school dances, and many of the other things that make high school such a positive experience. As difficult as it is financially, I urge you to take the opportunity, in these unfortunate budget times, to provide for this underserved and underrepresented student population. If not now, then when?
30 seconds.
If you find it necessary to rent the Ortega Street space as surplus property, you might use those funds to ultimately save other programs. But you would lose the opportunity to make a statement that your at-risk student populations are also important and deserving of equity and the same consideration as their peers. Thank you.
[applause] Thank you. Kirk Taylor, followed by Luke Orin, followed by Frances Corrella.
Hi, I'm Kirk Taylor, and I'm here to talk about the staffing parity issue between the three high schools. Hopefully add a little bit of clarity about the block schedule. It's a very complicated situation. First off, let me just say that I want to express my and many of their staff's appreciation for the work Mr. Smith's done in terms of trying to save money in the district. The breadth of detail has been very impressive, and we appreciate that. I also want to appreciate the board's willingness to engage in dialogue with members of our staff about this, and just wanted to appreciate that. Thirdly, I want to say, and Mike McLaughlin mentioned it also, you did get the math right in the little report there, which, at least as far as we can tell, it's been an ever-changing stream of information, very difficult to keep up with the differences that have come at us over the last few months. But it seems like you've gotten it right. There is one correction about that that I'll address. My main point for you tonight, I'm going to let hopefully Mike get another shot at the numbers here, but the formulas that are used at the staffs for staffing these our schools, there's the formula, the theoretical number that the formula produces, and then there's reality. And those numbers are rarely the same. And I want to make sure that the board realizes that, that the formula produces a number, the staff. For example, this year, both the other two high schools were staffed at a level that really was unworkable, and that number adjusted throughout the year. Now you go over there, teachers are pretty comfortable in their classrooms. It wasn't that way for the first four or five weeks of school.
30 seconds.
So please keep that theory versus reality in mind when we're talking about reducing the number of FTEs. It should be from the actual numbers, not from the theoretical formula numbers. Lastly, let me just make one correction. Well, let me say this. Mike mentioned this, but the staff at San Marcos has always been in favor of parity between the schools. There wasn't, I don't think, any teachers that actually knew we were out of parity until this issue came up. It has been a very recent event, not something that was in existence for the last two superintendents. Those formulas, our research and institutional memory confirms that those formulas were the same for all three high schools until two years ago.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
So it has not been a longstanding tradition, very recent. Thank you.
[applause] Luke Orin, followed by Frances Corrella, followed by Deborah Teton. Is Luke here?
I didn't see Luke.
Not here? Okay. Frances Corrella, followed by Deborah Teton, followed by Michael Hart.
Hi, I'm Frances Corrella, and I work over at Dos Pueblos High School, I'm the health clerk there. And I don't have a big thing or anything, I'm just talking from me. And I'm coming because, as you heard Sylvia say about the nebulizer and what happens, and I'm here because, not just because of my job and that hour, I'm here because of the quality of healthcare for the students at the school sites, and especially Dos Pueblos, because I love that school. But we're looking at kids who come in with seizures, diabetics, asthma attacks, just all sorts of stuff. And the staff there isn't trained, and they don't want, really don't want that responsibility laid upon them. So the 911's called. I go to lunch off-campus, and they ask me to take the radio just in case there's an emergency to call. And I don't take lunch off-campus. I feel better if I'm there, and there are the students, there's issues, there's medication problems, they don't know where the medication is for what student, or if it sure it's the right one. So not being with any health experience or any first-day training compromises the healthcare of the students. So cutting that one hour, me not being there, is a big difference from a seven-hour position to a six-hour position. So I feel that it's important that that not be cut. School starts zero period to four o'clock, there's a big gap of time. I try to be there, but it would just compromise the health of the students. There's so many health issues that come out. 911's called, it's an expense for the parents because it's an ambulance.
30 seconds.
And two, the city. 911 coming, it would come mostly, usually, when I'm not there. So I just hope you can reconsider that for the health assistance at the school.
Deborah Teton, followed by Michael Hart, followed by Hager Salers.
Hi, good evening. My name's Deborah Teton, I'm a counselor at Community Day School. And I'm here to recommend that La Cuesta start the moving process down to the district building as soon as possible. I'm glad it's not 10:30 at night, like it was the other time. La Cuesta students are at risk for many reasons. There's illness, there's death in the family, there's family issues, they're just having a hard time growing up. However, all of them are at risk for dropping out of school and just giving up. Consequently, we need the best teachers and the best programs and the best facilities to encourage and motivate these students who often truly don't have a very good opinion of themselves, and that needs to change. If we combine the La Cuesta schools, faculty, and resources, these students will benefit from teacher collaboration, community resources such as a library, using the museum, the ocean, special education resources, and community speakers. Students could be proud of where they are learning their credits and have classes besides the core classes to inspire and motivate them not just to graduate high school, but to start thinking about college and a career. The teachers at La Cuesta and Community Day School have one of the most difficult teaching assignments ever, yet it can also be one of the most rewarding, which our teachers have found. But they do need support and the ability to collaborate. They need counselors and administrators at hand to deal with the many issues that arise, so let's not let them be isolated any longer. At Community Day School, many of our students are embarrassed to walk to school because they go through La Colina, and they're unfairly depicted as those bad kids.
30 seconds.
What we've noticed is that studies do confirm that if students, if students, sorry, that motivation and success are directly related to a student feeling connected to their school. And those have been confirmed. So it's time to help create an equitable school where students feel a strong sense of community spirit. Please put our most at-risk students ahead of the value of real estate. Our students deserve this opportunity, and we, as a faculty, have been waiting quite a long time for this, and we really hope that we're allowed to do the best that we can do. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Michael Hart, followed by Hager Salers, followed by Kelly Baeza.
Hi, my name is Michael. I'm a senior at San Marcos High School. And I'm here to talk to you about the freshman class sizes of English classes and math classes. Currently, they're at 25 students, but though that's nice, it's really not necessary. If students, if it was risen to 31, or even brought up to at parity at 35, then we'd save a lot of money, probably close to $600,000 or so. And it's not that many more kids. I mean, 25 to 31, six more kids, and students can go in and talk to their teachers after class. Most good teachers make themselves available between classes, during nutrition, at lunch, or even after school to help their kids, or even struggling kids, they'll give them extra help. So really, it wouldn't make that much of a difference to students to have just an extra few, and it would alleviate that convenience, I guess. Also, to talk about the librarians, in the last four years at San Marcos, I've used the library, not like super amounts, but I've used it decently. And I've interacted with my librarian maybe five or six times, but every time I interacted with her, she was really helpful. And it was definitely a lot nicer than having to go on a computer and look for something than not know where in the library to go look for that book that I'm trying to find, or just to give me a recommendation on a book I'm trying to find. So in closing, I'd just like to say, we should keep the librarians around because they're useful and they help students, and they add a personal touch. And the freshman class sizes of English and math classes are definitely too low, and they need to go back up to at parity. Thank you.
And Dr. Sarvis, I don't know if you wanted to clarify, the actual class size for ninth grade reduction is?
Yeah, to qualify for Morgan Hart funding, the average has to be 20, though. One class may be as many as 22, another may be 18 to offset that, but we have to hit that average of 20.
Okay. Hager Salers, followed by Kelly Baeza, followed by Anne Cumming.
Hello, my name is Hager Salers, and I'm a senior at San Marcos High School. At your last board meeting on April 8th, you had a presentation done by the Waterford people with the bus, or the van, and they go around to different communities, at-risk communities, and teach children about reading. And now, at last meeting and this meeting, you're considering cutting librarians at La Cumbra Junior High. One of the junior highs that was having, was really struggling with test scores and reading. I really don't think it would be beneficial to cut librarians, especially with the testing problems that we have and the no child left behind, all of that. As a matter of fact, Ms. Martin, who's here, was my La Colina librarian, and I know that she helped with website building. She taught many of us how to build a website, and we were there every Friday after school helping with the La Colina website. We read, we got to read new books that we never would have picked up if she was not there. And librarians in the high school also act as a transition. I know you said at the last meeting, the freshman class size works as a great transition at the average of 20. But the librarian is a personal teacher almost that will tutor you, help you with whatever you want, work with technology, media, and also create a sense of community in the library. Also, you have, I know my freshman year, we had playwriting class.
30 seconds.
Band, choir, all of those work to create a sense of community that you also find in the freshman class size, but at $585,000, I believe, that's a very large expense for 20 students instead of 31 or 35. So thank you very much.
Kelly Baeza, and I apologize if I mispronounced your last name, Anne Cumming, followed by Carmela Galvez.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Baeza. I am a Dos Pueblos graduate, class of 1981, and have taught math in Santa Barbara High School District since 1987. I have taught every math course from 7th grade to gate advanced topics and pre-calculus. I've taught at San Marcos, La Cumbra, and Santa Barbara Junior High. In 2001, I left the classroom at San Marcos and went to work for the School University Partnerships, where we worked with schools in the Santa Barbara and Ventura County who traditionally send less than 4% of their graduating seniors to four-year colleges. When that program was cut from the California budget, I chose to return to the classroom, a La Cuesta continuation classroom. My friends, my math teacher colleagues, were shocked. Why would I want to work with those students? My response was simply because I had worked with Kathy Abney, whose vision was for at least parity for our continuation students. She advocates for the disenfranchised and is an educational leader. Currently, I teach math, science, health, government, economics, and PE at the La Cuesta San Marcos site. I have found that those are not, my students are not those kids.
30 seconds.
They're our kids. They're Santa Barbara kids. Let's move towards consolidation. It is not an additional cost to this district. We would only be losing, losing, revenue for leasing the Ortega site. But let's weigh the cost of all these students who won't be graduating and, ooh, and the missed opportunity to have an incredible school for our most at-risk and disenfranchised students.
Thank you. Anne Cumming, followed by Carmela Galvez, followed by David, and I'm sorry, it's hard to read your last name. Holmes.
Should I start? Okay, first, I've really aggressively cut what I wrote, so I get it all in. My name is Anne Cumming, and I'm the parent of a ninth grader at Santa Barbara High School and a French teacher at San Marcos. I've come here tonight to urge you to remove the elimination of two librarian positions from the list of potential cuts. Other speakers at the April 8th board meeting, and today, and particularly our very eloquent young speakers, have described eloquently and in detail the essential functions of librarians in the school. Librarians play so many different roles that they are a bargain, certainly not a luxury to be dispensed with during hard times. The notion that a technician could replace a librarian is absurd. Librarians are first and foremost teachers. Should we replace all our teachers with technicians? Not to give anyone any ideas, but what is more important than fostering a love of reading and teaching students to access information independently? The support of a librarian is most essential to those who have least academic support at home in the form of books, technology, and above all, educated parents. A library can be a great equalizer. So that's my main point. Then I want to make a few detailed ones. Research shows that libraries, even those that are well-stocked with books and computers, are used much less frequently when there's no librarian. There's a New York Times article I can pass on to you if you're interested. Thus, the financial investment in the library collection and technology is not fully realized. In other words, the library becomes a warehouse, not a program. Without a Without a librarian-certificated teachers would need to be paid to staff the library before and after school, during lunch, and even during regular school hours when there's no class. Has this been taken into account in the calculation of savings? If two schools lose their librarians through retirement, would this not violate the principle of parity among schools, which we've been hearing so much about lately? And finally, it was a huge loss to the elementary schools when their librarians were eliminated in spite of an, in spite of an outpouring of support from the community, such as we've seen today. This happened when no one was looking. Perhaps a parcel tax in the future could remedy this situation, but in any case, let's not allow this to happen again.
Thank you. Carmela Galvez, followed by David Holmes, followed by Mitchell Torina. Sorry, Mitchell? Mitchell Torina.
Good evening. My name is Carmela Galvez, and I'm here representing Just Communities Central Coast. Our organization has worked with educators and students from the Santa Barbara School District on issues of school equity and the achievement gap since 2001. In particular, we've worked really closely with La Cuesta High School in terms of addressing equity and also creating a supportive, engaging, and successful experience for the young people that attend La Cuesta High School. As part of our efforts with La Cuesta, we conducted a comprehensive survey in 2005, 2006 of the student body. We wanted to gauge what the students' perceptions were in terms of their, their learning environment and how they perceived that to be, and an unfortunate and overwhelming common thread that we came across as, as part of this survey is the fact that the students continually mentioned how they felt alienated, they felt, they identified themselves as outcasts, and they felt looked down upon in their general campuses. And generally, they expressed feeling disconnected from their learning experience, and so another common thread that we found in our surveys is that they identified, the students themselves identified that having a single campus would help them with their connectedness. So I hope that you will heed the words of Kathy Abney, Deborah Teton, and those who had spoken on behalf of La Cuesta and consider the words of the students themselves. Thank you.
David Holmes, followed by Mitchell Torina, followed by Nancy Stevens.
Hi, I'm David Holmes. I'm the San Marcos High School Performing Arts Chairperson, and something really interesting happened tonight, and you witnessed it. Dr. Malakoff asked for a little more detail on the parity issues of San Marcos, and she asked Eric Smith, who very deftly passed it on over to Superintendent Brian Sarvis, because he didn't feel prepared or really could speak well on that, so he gave it to Dr. Sarvis. Dr. Sarvis couldn't speak really very well on that issue, and he gave it off to SBTA President Lane Wheeler. Lane Wheeler also couldn't speak very eloquently or directly about this issue. All right. San Marcos staff have been working on this since November, and one thing that happens at San Marcos that we're very proud of is a spirit of collaboration, collaborative decision-making. All of that comes about as a culture, develops as a culture at a school. At San Marcos High School, the teachers there, the veteran teachers, I'm 24 years in this district, we have the institutional memory. It's lost at this district. And what I ask this board to consider, one, I ask you to really look at Mike McLaughlin's figures, he's a lot better at numbers than I ever will be, but to try to meet the San Marcos staff halfway in the cuts that you have to make. I mean, we all realize that there was an overstaffing. We can point fingers of blame all over the place, but the fact remains that we have been overstaffed. Well, let's get partway there. We ask that you consider a cut of about two FTEs rather than four, and work in the spirit of collaboration with the San Marcos teachers. We do have the institutional memory. We do know how the block schedule works. We can build a real resource for you. And I know I'm out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I know. Before I go, I have, I missed my plug at the, at the 7 o'clock. We have Damn Yankees that opens in a week. I couldn't be here at 6 o'clock, I was still working, and so I have for you, board members and some staff, some comps.
Mitchell Torina, followed by Nancy Stevens.
David, I announced it for you quite eloquently, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Thank you, district administration, fellow educators, and community. The issue I want to talk about regarding La Cuesta and a single site is equity, and I just want to let that word reverberate a little bit, because we all remember what it's like to walk onto a school campus and be told and be looked at like you're not worth the weight that you carry. We remember that. We remember what it feels like when you walk into a classroom and you know that the classroom next door to you may be getting a lot more support, a lot more service than the classroom you're stuck in, and you felt good about that. We also remember when you walked with the group of people that you were with, that you were told not to walk somewhere, or you were told only to walk in one area, and that piece about equity in our schools reverberated with each and every one of us. I'm a graduate of Franklin Elementary School. I'm a graduate of Santa Barbara Junior High School. I'm a graduate of Santa Barbara High School's class of 79. The issue for La Cuesta, and I know the dollars are hard to make sense, but the issue for La Cuesta isn't about dollars. The issue is not about the money. The issue is about equity for our underachieving, underrepresented, undersupervised young people in our community, and if they don't have an opportunity through education, where will their opportunities arise? On the streets?
Thirty seconds.
Through crime? Through any other way? Through any means necessary? The issue for La Cuesta is about equity. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Nancy Stevens.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Stevens. I am also a teacher at La Cuesta, and I'm here to address the same issue Mr. Torina so eloquently just put to you. Through educational research, we know how to improve student learning. This district, in fact, has made significant investment and commitment along these lines. The professional learning community, teachers collaborating on effective strategies, best interventions for struggling students, and analyzing data from frequent, frequent and timely assessments, these are the critical aspects of school improvement. At La Cuesta, in the last two years, we have changed our instructional delivery strategy system. We utilize a variety of strategies to address the learning needs of our at-risk student population. The next step for us in improving our school is to have a structure that matches and allows us to maximize our efforts and our resources. We need to offer our students a full range of courses to meet their learning goals. We need to be able to pool our resources at a single site. The two-room schoolhouse simply doesn't work anymore. There are compliance issues. Back in the 80s, when the current structure was devised, there weren't the instructional mandates and the levels of accountability that we have today. Today, the two-room schoolhouse, teachers working in isolation, simply doesn't work anymore. I urge you to put the educational needs of our most at-risk students at the forefront. The move to a single site can be done without additional cost to the district. The benefits to the community will exceed the possible loss of rental income. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends our public comment. Is that correct? I think we kind of need a break.
Absolutely.
We've got a hard job in front of us, so we're going to take a few-minute break here, 10, 15 minutes. Was there, did we miss somebody?
Yeah, I can see you. It's a private.
I've got you for E4.
Okay. All right, we're in break. Thank you for sitting down.
Really, by how much so?
Thank you for sitting down. Thank you. Can we start with Mr. Smith again? What are we, what's our number that we're aiming for here?
We need to achieve $4 million in ongoing savings going into '08-'09, and so we should be focusing on the '08-'09 list of reductions. Obviously, if the board thinks there are things that are listed in the additional sections that want, they want to move into that section, if they're quantified, we could look at those as well, but based on the menu of '08-'09, we're trying to achieve $4 million in reductions.
So we could take off $724,000 or less? We want to maybe leave a little bit aside for something for the first part that we talked about.
School services.
For school services recommendations. Can you clarify what that amount was? Was it $150,000 that you recommended?
$150,000.
So it's really $4,150,000 that we should?
Not for school services.
No, not for them.
Basically, implement some of the recommendations.
Yes.
One other clarification, Madam Chair, if I may. Mr. Smith, you said the last time that we were anticipating a textbook adoption next year that we would need to hold back some funds for.
Yeah, I think we have contemplated that in the '07-'08 budget, and so that issue and also in terms of the one-time allocation that'll go for the teacher retirement incentive in the current year's ending balance will be reflected at the third interim report. So it would be our goal, once the board made these reductions, is to reflect them in the multi-year projections that will be presented to the board alongside the third interim report.
So we got a $573,000. Does that sound about right?
I think so.
Which I, why are you surprised?
Well, because quite often, you're looking past it.
Oh, okay.
And I could go like this.
Lots of handout.
I remember board members had a good technique like this. I would like to just say now and to urge, indeed even to move, that we, that we make two very, the two top priorities are to stop work on moving La Cuesta and rent the Ortega facility at the earliest possible time, $558,726 for rent for the Ortega facility, and that we fast-track that, and that we fast-track the move of the district office to Santa Barbara Junior High, potential of $700,000. Now, that million, that million-two could make an enormous difference on the extent to which we have to invade very important educational and support programs that we've been hearing witness to tonight. So I would, I would move that we, that we, that we fast-track both of those projects.
Do I hear a second?
Sure, I'll second. Can I ask Mr. Smith to comment on this, because obviously, we need to make budget cuts now, and I'm not sure how much we can rely on?
I think there's two issues. One is to the degree that we have to convene a 7-11 committee and basically go through the process and the timeframe that we can do it in. The second issue is, is, you know, finding a tenant, and then we have a marketing issue, and so whether we can actually achieve those in the timeframe is one issue. I mean, obviously, we can achieve them all together, but the question is whether we can achieve them on a timely basis in terms of meeting our targeted goal of $4 million for '08-'09.
Clarification, if I may. Would we need a 7-11, we would only need a 7-11 committee for the Ortega Street site. We would not need a 7-11 committee to rent this half of the property, the district office's portion of the property.
I'm going to defer to legal counselors, not here, but I think that's correct.
Okay.
Because it wasn't a, it's been occupied as an administrative facility for some time now.
With the fact that it was, that the Ortega property was in fact used as a rental property within the last decade, would that make a difference?
No. Generally, what happens is that if it's been occupied as an educational facility, you know, in the last five years, then you're subject to certain requirements, and the requirements with respect to leasing facilities differ depending on who's occupied it and when, and there's different ad code sections that are applicable.
Ms. Cordero.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood your response to Mrs. Harder, Mr. Smith. If I understand you correctly, the timing, even if we were to fast-track something like that, would not, couldn't be fast enough to actually produce the saving we need for 2000, for '08-'09? Is that accurate?
In totality, let's say it took us six months to implement, or nine months to implement, so the estimated amount would be 50%, because we'd be halfway through the fiscal year. So that's an issue. There's an issue with convening the 7-11 committee and going through the process, and then there's an issue with actually marketing and retaining a tenant. I'm not saying that those couldn't be done, I'm just saying in the timeframe that we're looking at to achieve the savings that's targeted, it's a tight, it's an accelerated timeframe.
May I, may I, may I ask my secondor if this is okay? I should make a separate motion for each property.
So you're withdrawing the original motion and then making two new motions?
I'm bifurcating my original motion.
Sure. I agree.
Ms. Parker.
I think for me, in terms of rushing into fast-tracking this issue, I would prefer, especially in the case of the Ortega Street property, to have greater discussion about what the consequences could be, but also, we're looking at $2 million in cuts for '09-'10, and so I see these as real possibilities also for another, I mean, next year's going to be another big budget cut year, and anything that we save today could be gone tomorrow if, if things don't pan out the way we hope that they might in terms of the economy turning around. So I'm not sure that it does us any real good to rush through that decision.
I also agree, I don't want to see us rush, in that there are costs associated with, for example, Mr. Hedjunk, is it not true we'd have to get portables at Santa Barbara High School?
Santa Barbara High School.
No, at the high school for La Cuesta, because there's some, something about to happen there?
Modernization.
Modernization that's going to happen, and we have to do something with, at Los Torres, with those students since we are moving them out. Do you want to address that, or?
As of this time, we had not planned on leasing any interim housing for that project. However, if we did, that would come out of the project funds. We did open bids for that project, and it did come in under budget, however, we have not evaluated the bids completely yet.
My point is that there are, there are costs associated with doing this, and at this point, rushing it like this, I do not like to see that.
When you say rushing this, are you talking about both pieces or one piece?
I think eventually, we are going to, it makes sense that we had talked about moving this to the administration, to Santa Barbara Junior High. I think that's on the books, that's going to happen anyways at some point, and I think you're rushing it along a little bit, but it's going to happen. But I'm very much against La Cuesta, against using the space, not for La Cuesta, but for renting it out.
Well, I seconded the motion just to, in order to complete the vote. I mean, I happen to agree with one piece and not the other, but I think until we actually take a vote, particularly with regard to moving the district offices to Santa Barbara potentially to Santa Barbara Junior High.
It hasn't happened, yes.
Until we have a vote that signals a clear direction to the superintendent, then it's always going to get held over for an always going to get held over for another month, another discussion, another, so I actually wouldn't mind, you know, taking the votes.
Okay, so we should take a vote, did you want to say something, Ms. Cordero, or should, can I go ahead and take?
No, I was going to say, I don't think we've had the discussion about moving the district office. We've bandied around the idea.
It was just on the list last night.
Yeah, it was on, we haven't had any discussion about it. We haven't had any, you know, presentation. I would like to know what the, what the pros and cons of that move would be. We really haven't heard any, any serious analysis of why that would be a good idea.
I, I agree. So I think we need to wait and do that more thoroughly. I agree with that.
I agree.
So I'm, can I call the question?
May I participate in the debate on my motion? Thank you. I look at the pros and cons of cutting librarians, of cutting the ninth grade class size reduction, eliminating that, of cutting an assistant principal here, cutting librarians there, cutting the coronalities program. And, and I hear the pros and cons of those, and those have to do immediately now with education, tonight, before we go to bed. And that's what makes me, if, rather impulsive. I grant you, I can't, I can't move, obviously, we can't move the offices to Santa Barbara Junior High tomorrow, but if we set it as a priority, I think we could make a big difference. And looking at the possibility of $700,000, if Mr. Smith knew that we had set a priority, and that's what we're going to do, and start figuring out how to use that money, I think we can save cutting some vital programs. I don't want to be in a position where you, where we are now saying, oh, well, we haven't got time, so let's cut the programs while we think it through. No way.
Do you want to amend your motion to say that we will put that on the table, something to think about and something to move forward on?
No, my motion was to fast-track each of them. I have two, I have a bifurcated motion. I use the word "fast-track," so let me repeat it. To fast-track the move of the district office to Santa Barbara Junior High, that'd be the first motion.
Well, can, Mary?
Fast-track means fast-track.
I also think that if we're going to include this as part of the discussion on cuts and tonight, we need to have a dollar amount attached to it. If you're thinking that it could take months to come through, what, what do you think would be reasonable for us to? I mean, I don't know what to do with this.
Let me address that.
Can I participate in the discussion for, just for one second? And that is, given the, the motion that Dr. Noel has made, and I made a second, and I would be voting yes, but it's not because I think that we can achieve those savings in time for the start of the '08-'09 school year, it's because I want to get moving on it as quickly as possible. So I have no, I don't assume that the money will be there in August of '08. I know that it won't be, but I would like to signal an intent to the superintendent and his staff that we need to start making plans for that.
Then I'd rather hear a motion that says an intent, a discussion and an intent, than I can't vote for it unless it says something along those lines, that there is some discussion first. So anyways, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, that fails. There was another part to that question, was about La Cuesta.
No, it's about the Ortega property, and it's about renting that. The estimate here is $558,726. And I absolutely accept Mrs. Harder's logic and reasoning, that this is simply to get us off the dime and start moving on these things, rather than all we're talking about are those things that can happen in the future. The future is now for these programs, so let's make the future as close as possible to now for these, for this possibility.
Anyone else before we vote?
I just, I just want to share your concern. If it, if we were just voting to give staff direction to pursue this, I would probably, I'd be much more inclined to favor it. But the, the term "fast-track" definitely concerns me, because I feel like we've made a decision before we've actually discussed the issue. And I, I think we've seen too many times when, in, in the history of this board, not just this board, but in the history of the district, that there have been decisions made that were penny-wise and pound-fullish, because they weren't all that way thought through. And this may be the right decision, but I'd rather make sure that we had examined it thoroughly first before we made that decision. But I do say that with an eye towards trying to have that examination as soon as possible so that we can move on it and not let it drag out.
Do I, can I call the question, or do you want to say something? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Thank you. Next, yeah, would you like to make a motion?
I actually was, thought, of help, if we're looking at the list on page 34, I think there are some items there that are not too controversial, that we could perhaps just agree to do, so that we could narrow down the list to the things that we really want to discuss. And I was looking, and other people may, may think there are some that are controversial that I didn't think were, but I looked at A through K, for example, and I thought those were things that seemed pretty, pretty doable. Most, most of them did not involve academic programs, they're more administrative things.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make, well, let me add a couple more. O, Q, T, which we've already done, W, Z, and double A.
Yes, yes.
So I will make a motion that we adopt those cuts.
I'll second.
Second from Harder. Any discussion? That was kind of easy, I think. All those?
Mr. Hetjung, maybe you could, can you circle on there or not? Okay. A through K. O, Q, T as in Tom, W, and then the last two. I think it was already seconded.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes 5-0.
Now, I tried to calculate that out, and I think it comes, if I did it correctly, I think it comes out to $2,337,710, which I think leaves us with a million, roughly a million eight that we still need to cut.
Okay, I'll wade into the dirt that nobody wants to wade into.
I did the easy part.
I'd like to add L, M, and N to the list.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll put it in the form of a motion to re...
Oh, sorry.
To, to include L, M, and N in the reductions. And there was a second.
Can you, do you want to add U also, or?
I'm going to move to, I know how to bifurcate, I know how to triccate, how do I get M out of your list, Mrs. Harder? I'd like to vote on it separately. Pardon, yeah, same. No, wait a minute, wait a minute. L?
I have L, M, and N.
L's the one I want out. If I may vote on M and N separately.
Then I'll, I will amend my motion if the secondor agrees to remove M and N.
No, no, just to remove L.
Thank you. To vote on M and N.
I'll agree.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of making the cuts for M and N? Aye. Sorry. Any opposed? Nope, passes 5-0. I will make a motion, if, I'll wade in here, to split apart ninth grade class reduction to math and English.
I'll actually make a motion to remove ninth grade class size reduction for English from the list.
That's what I was going to do.
And I'm sorry that Mr. Turnbull isn't here, because, and I don't know if you can offer information with regard to this, Dr. Sarvis, but I was looking at a ninth grade class size reduction only for algebra as opposed to geometry. It's a mix for ninth grader, some, a smaller number take algebra, a larger number take geometry. It's about a one-third, two-thirds split. But I believe that there are other monies to use for those classes. Is that correct? KC money?
There may be, although we use that for lower-level students.
Than algebra in ninth grade?
Yes.
Which is really a year behind grade level?
Yes.
But they, it could be used for Algebra I, everybody has to. I mean, essentially, a high school student is going to get Algebra I support, because you have to have that in order to graduate from high school.
Well, we have lower-level math students, and we typically use that money for the lower-level math students.
Okay, well, I did hear a motion for, I think, for math, of her, excuse me, for English.
To...
Take that off this list.
In other words, you're saying...
Do we have a separate number for that?
No.
In other words, you're saying, save English ninth grade class size reduction.
Right, in other words, remove it from this list.
Okay, we're doing the opposite now. Okay, do I hear a second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. So, any opposed? So I heard 5-0.
So that removes how much? I'm trying to, I can't...
That removes $285,000. So looking at it the other way, if we're now, you said five, $285?
So we need about, we still need to cut about 1.6.
There are a number of items that are on the list that are related to special education and those kinds of services. It's specifically R and S. No, I'm sorry, S is the parity issue. R and, hold me out here, I'm not seeing it.
We already did the other one.
And U.
And U, yeah.
Oh, U, yeah.
And I, I know this feels really heartless, except that I, I know that our special ed population has declined in numbers, and I also know that our, one of our largest contributions from the General Education Fund is to special education in spite of the smaller numbers. So I'm going to put both of those items out there for reductions.
R?
Yeah, and U.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Yeah, it doesn't feel good, we've got to get there.
I, I, can we divide up some of this other money between some of these things, though? Can we, I mean, it's not an all-or-nothing here, right? So we can do a little, we have about $280,000 to somehow pull back.
Well, I guess, I guess really, the, one of the bigger issues then is staffing at the comprehensive high schools is probably one of the biggest ticket items on there, so it's a question of how we go about doing that.
And the librarians, is that the other issue?
Yeah, that's, that's the other issue for me. And what I wanted to put out there regarding the librarians was to see if it's possible to put together a plan where the three junior high librarians shared those four libraries, and to hire one secondary librarian for the high school.
That makes sense to me, to have San Marcos have a librarian as well. Now, how are we going to cost that out?
But, no, I just don't think it works.
How does that compare in cost?
What's the proposal again?
To have, instead of two library techs, to have one librarian and...
Essentially, instead of 108, you're going to have that, so put that at about $54,000.
Are you talking about quitting a tech in place at, at the junior high, then?
Whatever could best be worked out, it might, yeah.
You'd probably need, you'd need more tech, but it might, that tech might be shared across schools also.
In that case, it might just cut this amount in half, so instead of $108,000, it'd be $54,000.
Okay, can we?
I just, I mean, I think that that's a great idea, but I'm, to me, it comes down to S and, and trying to make things work for San Marcos for another year as, as we figure out the staffing issue there. And, and I don't know how we can do that if we take anything else off the table. I mean, even, even as it stands, getting rid of absolutely everything else, even with San Marcos, it's still too much, or not enough, I should say, in terms of...
I was going to go back in total, once we know what the deliberation is.
We have R and U on the table at the moment. Although we're discussing, I, the librarian seems like that's such a small, I mean, relatively a small amount compared to these others, but you can see it all adds up. And I was just, I guess I was hoping, I'll say this out loud, is that we could divide up sort of evenly between those, those different items. And it doesn't add very much, you're right, it doesn't do very much for the parity issue, but some. I'd rather, if we can, can we table your, your R and U vote motion for a minute? Is that all right?
Sure.
Can we have the motion for the, do you want to make the motion for the librarians? Or you'd rather, I'll do it? The one you said, it sounded great.
No, I understand, but in order to get there, we've got to be making reductions in order to create some savings, so...
I agree. I think we need to focus on what we're actually...
To me, right now, we need to focus on, on S and...
Okay, do you want to make a motion for S?
I move to take S off of the list. Oh, my gosh, completely. You can't.
We don't, we can't.
Well, the 320, okay. So in other words...
We're over.
Or, or put it to a vote, go ahead.
Was there a second? But if we take that off the list, we, we don't add up to enough cut.
May I, may I, may I amend? I'd like to move to amend. The amendment is very simple, that the district limit home-to-school transportation expenses to the amount provided by the state, which according to Mr. Smith's calculations frees up $115,000 and...
This is kind of a separate issue to me than, than...
It's my, it's my amendment, Madam President.
Would you accept his amendment?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to find money to alleviate the problem at San Marcos.
I understand that. I mean, I, to me, that maybe should be a separate motion that gets dealt with first.
I'd be happy to do that, but I didn't know quite how to, how to do that.
Which item are you referring to, Dr. Noel?
Well, it's back in here, Mr. Smith can probably...
Do you know what page, what page it's on?
Home-to-school transportation and...
That's what I'm wondering, which one you mean? Do you, what?
You know where it is?
Is it that, we eliminate, I'm not even sure what you just said. Is it eliminating busing or parent-paid transportation?
The state provides a certain amount of money.
Yeah, it's on 24. It's actually, it's embedded within the institute, parent-paid transportation. I think that's where Dr. Noel got the figure.
The state, the state provides a certain amount of money for home-to-school trans... The state, the state provides a certain amount of money for home-to-school transportation. That's not for special ed, that's for kids. And, and we spend 115,000 more than the state provides. I'm simply saying that we stopped spending that. And, and, and that really, that releases 115,000 from the general fund that otherwise would be committed, and that we use that to help resolve this problem at San Marcos.
But can I, can I ask Mr. Smith a question? Mr. Smith, in your, in your analysis, didn't you...
It would require you to negotiate with STA to make those reductions, which would probably result in a reduction in service. So, that issue is separate and apart than the parent pay issue. And I think where you were going with is the parent pay issue, I, I see problematic relative to the percentage of free and reduced in the elementary and the potential for exemption. But I think what Dr. Noel is suggesting is there's 115,000 contribution from the unrestricted general fund to balance home-to-school transportation in the elementary and basically contain it within its apportionment. But I think the only way to do that is reduce level of service, which would require us to go back and negotiate with STA. And they're gonna have to reduce routes, eliminate routes, or there's gonna be an impact, but at this point, I don't know what it is.
And also, didn't you say something about that if we renegotiated, we may end up with a, a much more, less favorable contract?
Well, I think there's a couple of issues. One, if, if we bid, and it hasn't been bid since 1987, I believe, if we bid, there's always the potential, given the increases in labor and fuel, that we're gonna get a bid that's less competitive than when our current, you know, contract is, you know, and obviously, the board always rejects the right to, you know, reserves the right to reject all bids. However, if we're in that situation where we know what the costs are, and now we're in a position to negotiate, we're in a pretty unfavorable position to negotiate. So, I think that STA probably would be amenable to negotiate, because I know they know there's other competitors out there that want their business. However, it's, it's a wild card. It's anybody's guess what could happen if, if we bid this thing. So, that's why I wrote it the way I wrote it, is because if the board directs me to competitively bid it, I want you to know there's risk if we proceed, so...
My motion is really simple.
Yeah, I, I know. There was just a lot more Q and A there.
My motion is, is quit, quit subsidizing it from the general fund and solve that problem separately and use the general fund money to help solve tonight's problems.
I, I don't think I can accept that motion because I'm, I'm not sure at this point that it's anything that would even save us any, if it's feasible enough, given the...
Oh, sorry, Ms. Parker, it's very feasible. You just say, "We are not going to subsidize home-to-school transportation."
Right, and I'm just...
Out of the general fund. That's really simple.
I'm just concerned with the effect that would have on our low-income...
So, is the mo, is the amendment rejected, then?
That amendment is rejected.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, which is...
We're debating the motion.
No, we're debating the amendment which has been rejected.
She rejected it. You can make another motion later. It's just, right now, we're... I would like to amend my motion, however, because for San Marcos, I know it's $25,000 over as it stands. And in terms of what we need to cut, so I would move, I would like to amend my motion so that instead of 325, it's 295.
I'm sorry, which...
Sorry, instead of 320, it's 295.
You're referring to S.
Right, take that off the table for San Marcos.
But...
I guess, I don't, is there a second here?
No, was there a second? No, there isn't.
Yeah, I seconded it.
Oh, okay.
I guess the way I feel about it is, it, I would... I feel like this is a halfway point between what has to happen in the next two years. And I know that Mr. McLaughlin has, has, has lobbied very eloquently and enthusiastically to make it a smaller step this year and then a larger step this year.
Next year.
I'm sorry. But I, I, I really would rather go the halfway mark, try and work issues out.
Right, that is the halfway mark.
The 320 is.
Right, and I'm taking it, making it even smaller, so that it's less than halfway at 295, so that we can make it. That's what I'm taking off the table. I'm not sure if that has not been...
No, I think, I think everybody understood what you were saying.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't.
I don't, because I think you're, you just said 295 would be only 35,000.
No, no, no. I said, given how much we still need to hit to 4 million, given that we've already taken 285.5 off. We took 285.5 off for the ninth grade English class size reduction. We still, if we added 320,000 to that, it comes to 605,500 total. If I would, if you were gonna say, "Take all of San Marcos," but we can only take out 573,000. I'm coming at this from a different angle. You're adding and I'm subtracting from the 4,700. Do you see what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but we voted to take the 285 off the table, but we didn't vote, at least as far as I know, we didn't vote to actually cut the remainder.
The math part.
The math part.
Right, that's still, that's still absolutely out there. We, we could do that as well. What I'm doing is just making a motion about San Marcos right now and getting them to, unfortunately, you can't get them to the halfway point. 320 takes you to more, if you add 320,000, which is what they are recommending here, in terms of cuts, that's... That brings it up to 605,000.
So, you're saying, instead of the 320, to, to cut how much? The 295?
I was saying to keep 295 for it. Do you see what I'm saying?
No, I still don't get it. Do you mean just...
Correct?
Correct.
So, this, what I'm saying is, let's try to staff all comprehensive high schools at parity. However, 320,000, maybe I'm going in the wrong direction in my math. It should actually be 340, 45,000.
So, you're saying, you're saying, reduce, we're keeping. I'm sorry.
I didn't mean that to sound more confusing.
I think she's proposing an increase in the cut.
Increase in the cut. Cut, to make it so that it works and keep that at, at parity, or first step towards parity.
Well, as the secondor of the motion, I don't know what I second.
I'm sorry, 'cause I, I should keep, you know, I know you guys were adding on and I said I was subtracting, and so...
You're saying, instead of cutting 320, we should cut 345?
That is currently my understanding.
That's the opposite direction.
Mine, too.
And I was, I was actually arguing because I thought you were suggesting something entirely different.
Yes, no, yeah, no, and I'm sorry, I was going the opposite direction.
Well, could you phrase it in terms of how much you'll cut and how much you'll keep?
We have, we have to cut, we can only keep 573,000 off of this list.
I'm just talking about San Mar, I'm just talking about this parity issue.
We have only kept, we can only keep 573,000, so I, I need to come back to this and subtract. So, now that we have taken off 285.5 from that list, or from that total amount of money, that leaves us with...
288.
288 left that we can do, so we...
And then I have a question. Did you take your, your proposal with respect to the media technicians in the library?
We didn't vote on it.
You haven't voted on it?
We haven't voted on it. So, essentially, there's only 288.5. Sorry, I'm, we're doing the math wrong on that. 287.5?
So, but, essentially, though, if we vote...
287.5. No, I got it. It's 287,500. That's all that we have left that we can possibly save. So, in other words, even if we were to go to, if we wanted to do everything that we could for San Marcos right now, we can't do, it has to be more than 320,000 that gets cut.
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
The difficulty is, I don't know how we would achieve that. There are a number of variables in the equation. And in fact, the, the parity equation that Mike Caston gave Ann Peake years ago was based on students taking 5.9 classes, teachers teaching five classes a day, and doesn't have any, any relevance for block schedule. The variables that could be worked with are class size ratio, that's in contract language, and that has to be negotiated. There are other variables that could be worked with. There are variables about the length of the, of the instructional day or the number of students taking classes. There could be a, there could be a formula used just for San Marcos High School that would actually even fit their situation better, if you wanted, without any offense, take into consideration the block schedule. Something like the fact that, that students take on average 3.6 classes and teachers teach three classes each semester. But just hitting a number doesn't get us there and doesn't achieve our negotiation. And in fact, in the absence of negotiating, negotiating some sort of a, of a decrease, well, I wonder whether we will even get there. And I know it compounds the issue, but maybe we need to take other items and, and, and in the event that we cannot reach a certain dollar amount, then those items would be cut as well. But just taking a dollar amount, I don't think will be very doable. I mean, for instance, right now, we could work in multiples of, currently, we have in contract 31 to one, and we can work in multiples of that, 32 to one, 33 to one. That's the one that we've been talking about. We could work in another multiple. We could work in 34 to one. That'd take us about another half the distance between this 320,000 and, and 640,000.
May I make a suggestion, which may not be entirely satisfactory? But what if we set aside San Marcos staffing and the librarian issue? Vote on all the rest of the items, vote to reduce all the rest of the items, eliminate them, and then come back to the San Marcos and the librarian item when we have some very specific scenarios worked out.
Can I put one more on there? It's the school psychologist. And do everything else.
I actually had suggested putting in the school psychologists to reduce them. I, I mean, I thought, I, I made the motion. I don't know where, where it went.
Yeah, we sort of set it aside. I'm willing to second, I, I don't know what, what you wanna propose. I'm...
No, it was those two items. You know, we can keep adding those two items.
Go ahead and do that.
And we're gonna keep having Groundhog Day. We're gonna keep having the same meeting over and over again, so I would like to keep as just finite as possible.
Okay.
But we had two that were tabled temporarily, that were yours.
You tabled, you tabled one. I did not.
It was, um...
The administrative...
Did we vote on the other two, on M and N?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
We did?
Yeah. So, I have on the table, was there a second for that?
I'll second Mrs. Harder's.
Okay. So, I have on the table that we're eliminating everything on here, except we already put back part of P and then we're taking off, what letters are they? S and, where's the librarian, sorry, V.
So, the only thing that we would, that would not be in this motion are S and P?
V.
V?
V.
V, I'm sorry.
V.
Yeah, it's in this motion, right?
And math and so forth. Math class size would also be in that notion.
Yes.
Well, I, I'd like to vote on some of these individually. I don't like this block voting.
Well, we have a motion, we have a second.
I move to amend. I, I, I move to amend the motion by taking off L and voting on it separately.
Okay.
Well, so much for that.
No, that's fine. I, I accept the amendment, sure. I don't know if the secondor accepts it.
I'll second it.
Okay, well, then I get to amend. And I'll take off the R. Does anybody second my R?
Sure. I mean, we can always vote on, we can always vote on them separately.
Right.
Are we seconding amendments, or do I'm really...
Or doesn't the maker of the motion just accept the amendment? We don't second amendments.
Excuse me, you're right, you're right.
To amend, that requires a second, Mrs. Cordero.
Okay, so we got a second. Do I hear a, who was the motioner? It was you. Would you accept my?
No.
No, okay. Okay. So, we are now voting. Yes. On, let's do it in the other direction, on taking, eliminating, or putting, or cutting. It's O, no, yeah, O, half of...
Well, we did O.
No, we do, we did O, sorry.
My, I, I, can I, if I could restate it?
Yes, please.
To, to table S and V, to gather some more information.
And then we got...
And we included L. And that's it.
I, then no one...
So, you didn't mean to enact all the others as cuts?
I mean to enact all the others.
All the others as cuts.
Right.
Okay.
I, I just wanna clarify what our vote will mean. If we want to have some further discussion on, um... I'm sorry, I'm...
An R, for example.
Yes, I'm losing track of where it is. An R, for example. We have to vote no on this motion.
That's correct. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Okay, so it was a no. Let's try a few more at a time here that we can agree on.
I move that we adopt the cut of L. Second.
Well, I don't know enough, I, I would like to know, does this includes, this includes cutting assistant principals?
Yes, it does.
Which schools?
I can't tell you that yet. I don't know.
This has been on the agenda for weeks.
No, it was based on a ratio of 500 to one, and I know...
It's in the...
It, it would most likely cut junior highs half a position.
Well, I would move to amend that, to the effect that each junior high school would have a minimum of one assistant principal.
Do I hear a second for that? No. Okay, so can't go on.
So, much for that.
Okay. Any, okay, any other discussion? Then, all those in favor of L signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And no?
No.
So, it passes four one.
And who seconded that? Annette Cordero?
No, she, she made the motion.
I think, did I second it, or you seconded?
I think, maybe I, did I second? I don't normally second, okay.
Okay.
Four one.
Okay, any other motions?
Is Y, did we vote on Y?
No.
I would, I would move to, to delete Y from consideration.
All the, second? Nope. Okay.
I'll make the opposite motion. I would like to move to place Y on the items of reductions.
Do I hear a second? Second. I'll second. So, Harder and Malakoff, all those in favor? Or any discussion on that?
Yes, this, this means cutting the Core Knowledge Program at La Cumbre Junior High, and that means cutting the Core Knowledge Program anywhere in the secondary district, since that was the only place that existed. And the Core Knowledge Program has been one of the most successful programs we've seen, particularly for disadvantaged and minority students. And I think it's a grievous mistake to eliminate it.
I actually don't know that, that this would be the demise of the program. I don't, I, I don't know what kinds of categorical funds might be put into play to backfill this... To backfill the asylum.
I wish Mr. Turnbull were here, but I absolutely do not think this means the cut, the elimination of the core knowledge program.
Well, if you could get the superintendent to guarantee that, I would withdraw my motion.
I can't guarantee it, but I do, I do have in the other room-
You have a different motion.
-a list of anticipated additional electives, and I thought I saw that on this list. But, I'd, I'd have to go get that list.
Well-
I think we can call for the question on this motion.
Okay. Um, it was to eliminate Y. Or, I'm sorry, is to cut Y. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
So, that passes 4-1.
Mr. Smith, are you in any way keeping a tally of these?
A little bit.
I'm trying-
Let me, let me tell, I, I've taken a tally of what you pulled off, and I'm working backwards. So, I mean, I'm assuming as we go through the list, if there's anything else that gets pulled off, then, you know, I'll subtotal that, and then we'll back into it.
I'm trying to keep a tally, and if, if I'm doing it correctly, I think we need to still cut about 992,000.
Hold on a sec. I, I don't think so.
You mean less?
Well, what you pulled off is what I'm calling PA, which is half of ninth grade class size reduction. You pulled the San Marcos parity issue at 320,000, and you pulled V off at 108,285. Those are the three things that are-
We, actually, we still haven't pulled off S and V, that failed.
You haven't pulled off what?
S and V, that failed.
Oh, that failed. Okay.
But we, and we-
So, all you've pulled off is ninth grade class size reduction?
Do we do U?
Half of it.
No.
We haven't done U yet.
No.
Do you want to come back, since that was tabled?
Well, I was, I was actually gonna put U, W, and X.
No, W, we did, right?
I'm sorry, I had a check mark next to it, and then I-
Yeah, W is done.
It's X.
X, okay, so-
U and X.
T, U, and X.
We already did T.
Thank you, U and X.
Just, I'm sorry, can I just clarify which ones we have not acted on yet? I think we have not acted on P, R, S, U, V, X.
That's what I showed.
Okay.
That's what I have as well.
And you, on the table, I heard a motion for V and X. I'm sorry, where were we on this one? V and X.
I need a second, sorry, second.
I didn't even hear what the motion was, hang on, we've got a little sidebar going on here. Item E4 is the health assistance, and we have some speakers, I think, who have, who want to address, a speaker?
No, we have three speakers for E4.
Why is E, what is E4, though?
It's specific to the health assistance.
E4 is about, um- The, uh-
Proposed reductions and layoffs.
No, no, external defibrillator.
No, 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 you're looking at F4.
I'm sorry.
Classified general funding-
Classified general funding categorical position layoffs due to lack of funds.
Oh. Okay, sorry. The classified, so why not?
Because if we, if we go ahead and vote on, um, X now- On item X, then-
It affects, uh, E4.
Then it affects E4.
I know, the last motion was for V and X. And did I hear a second? Oh, and I seconded, yes, I did second it.
I don't remember.
No, it was, Harder.
It was not V.
It was U and X.
U and X.
We already, but shall we have the question?
U and X.
Where, where are we with the public speak comments?
Should we go ahead and have the public comments specifically on the health assistance, since they were, since they are related to X, and they want to hit that before you?
Sure.
All right, let's go ahead and call that Deborah Pentland, followed by Wendy Landeros, followed by Brian Tangue, did you want to speak at his point, too?
Good evening, board members. I suggest we tell the state if they're gonna fund us at 90%, we're only gonna function at 90%. Instead of, doing what you have to do is terribly difficult, 'cause I see holes, safety holes being cut in education. But I'm here this evening to talk to, speak to the issue of health assistance in our health offices. As you see, our health assistants serve elementary to secondary, and there's a couple of discrepancies on the proposed cuts. It's certain places, it says elementary campuses, and then the list in E4 cites three secondary campuses. However, I'm here to speak to that when children are in school, we need a trained health assistant who is CPR and first aid, ready for accidents, illnesses, medical complications, disasters. In the event of a disaster, our health assistant is the highest medical person on that campus. They will be coordinating triage, treatment, and all that. There is not an hour during the day that students aren't on campus that allow us to function without a health assistant. As you see, we see 1,000 to almost 5,000 students come through our health offices a day. We give medications, we give specialized health procedures. Many of the contracts say that other employees cannot do specialized health procedures. So, we would be in a, we would leave the student at risk and the district with a liability list, a li, a liability problem, because you will not have the adequately trained personnel to treat the students at the site. So, I recommend against the 40,000. I don't know if we have any more money left, but I think it's a great risk for 40,000.
Okay, thank you. Wendy Landeros, followed by Brian Tangue.
Good evening, my name is Wendy Landeros. I'm the long-term sub covering a full-time health assistant at La Colina Junior High. I am here to discuss with you the difficulty in meeting the, the health needs of the students, as well as meeting the state and the district mandated record-keeping with the hours that we currently have now, and why I see that is impossible to continuing to cut these hours. I'm in this position as a sub because the office staff is unable to cover their job and the health office. Here's why. At La Colina Junior High, we have 1,000 students. Seven of them are insulin-dependent diabetics. Nine of them have seizure disorders. There are nine Epi pens in my office for severe allergic reactions to peanuts or bee stings. We have one student that had a stroke earlier this, this year, he's at risk of hypertension and seizures. We've had one liver transplant student as of September 2007. We have to be watchful for signs of rejection and/or infection. We have to be watchful of other students in her classes that may have contagious diseases. I daily prescribe, administer prescription medications at school for students. I have over 100 asthmatic students at La Colina. I've placed six 911 calls this year. So far, I've had over 1,300 office visits-
30 seconds?
-to the La Colina Junior High Health Office. Please reconsider the cuts made to the health services and keep our students safe. Thank you.
And Brian Tangue.
Brian Tangue, CSEA president. Well, I'm happy to note that, with the exception of Mr. Smith, all of you are as math-challenged as I am. So, that's one positive that comes out of this. And there are a lot of positive things going on in the district, but this proposal to cut the health assistance, I don't think is one of them. I have some real concerns about this because my members, who are all hard-working, dedicated people, are facing cuts, and moreover, I'm very concerned about what this is gonna mean for our students. To have kids on campus with no health assistant on duty really troubles me. But I'm equally troubled that we're even having this conversation in a state that, with the wealth of California, and here we are, cutting the budget for education. It's, it blows my mind, it makes no sense whatsoever. And I know we have to make cuts. We had a negotiating meeting on Monday. I've pledged that classified employees will do everything we can to contribute to the fiscal stability of the district. We will do our best to make universal breakfast work. You voted to approve it without really knowing what that means. There's a hell of a lot of work to make that program work so we can reduce the encroachment of the cafeteria fund on the unrestricted general fund, but we'll pledge to make that work. Our furlough proposal, I know there's some concerns with it, but it's still on the table. I would much rather spread the pain across our bargaining unit and keep our health assistants in place for our kids than cut our health assistants. So, I would urge you to, to consider that again.
30 seconds?
And our minds are open. Any reasonable idea, we'll listen, we'll work with you. You know that we will, we've proven it again and again. So, I would urge you to reconsider that and keep these hard-working people in place for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarification, it says elementary district health assistance, is that just the elementary school? Elementary district?
The one, the, the correlation relative to enrollment decline within the elementary, the other item deals with the district-wide.
Which is the other item?
I just want to throw out one thing with regard to what Mr. Tangue just said, and that was the, I think, the really incredible proposal from CSEA to, to, you know, put furlough days on the table. And, you know, I'm, I'm willing to continue to explore it, but I feel really strongly that if we're gonna talk about furlough days, it's all or nothing. I don't think that CSEA alone should be putting a furlough day on the table. I would, you know, furlough my pay for a month, I think SBTA or management would also have to agree. I don't, I don't think that it's the burden of one particular group of workers. So, if we're gonna have any discussion about furlough days, I would like to see it involve everyone.
Okay, we have on the table. Yeah. Well, we still have on the table, um-
Do we have a motion on the table?
Yeah, we have a motion, it's U and X. And it was Harder seconded by Malakoff. Any other discussion?
U and, and S? X.
X. And it's the elementary district health assistance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So, it passes 4-1.
So, what I find especially troubling about that vote, I had suggested that we raise the question of the athletic trainers at the high schools.
You haven't put it-
145, I'm commenting on my vote, on 145,000 dollars. And I'm, and I'm just, I'm struck by the argument that's offered here, a compelling argument can be made that athletic trainers help reduce the risk by preventing and treating student injuries. And, and yet, we've just cut, that's, we're spending 145K on that, and we just cut-
Would you like to put that on the, I'll make an amendment on that? I'll make a motion on that?
Well, if I thought it had any chance of getting a second, I'd move that we, that we cut athletic trainers by half, and free up some money and restore the health assistance.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it's a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Actually, I'm not gonna second it, but what I'd like to propose is bringing it forward at the, the next board meeting, because in essence, what we're doing is, we had an opportunity tonight for people to come and speak to their position, to the issue, and that sort of thing. So, we're gonna take some positions and cut them in half tonight, without offering that person the opportunity to come forward and speak on behalf of it, or any of their constituents who want to speak on behalf of it, so that those folks come to, to work tomorrow and find out that one and a half of them don't have a job. So, I'm willing to put it on the table for discussion, but not under these circumstances.
Well, see, that's what, one of, I, one of my chronic complaints with our process is that we don't put all the trade-offs up. So, this kind of thing gets buried in this, what's it called? Analysis, additional analysis for long-term health. To me, this is a very short-term issue, and it's very frustrating, the process prejudges these issues.
Well, I would also like it to be part of the next discussion, because we're gonna need to talk about San Marcos-
Correct.
-school psychologists, apparently, and also the librarians. So, it, it all needs to be part of the same, it all needs to be on the table at the same time.
So, that if we, what I would recommend then, that we make the cuts up to this point, but we may be able to find other things in the next few months, especially, I know, we're gonna keep going back to this, is the problem. Yeah, next week or two, and we'll keep having to readjust this. Is that make, I mean, is-
Well, I, I think there's two issues. One is providing the county office with the plan of board-approved reductions, which have to be real. That's the, the imminent issue. The second issue, as, as the board's heard me say before, I think a number of these things are out there because it's a two-year plan, and we've already had some discussions about, you know, the time it'll take to do, to rent out a facility and things of that nature. So, I think the things that got put in additional long-term health and analysis, I guess some of them could have been moved forward, but, you know, in most cases, we just learned of them in the last week or so, and we had to do the analysis. Some of those could be implemented in '08, '09, but I think most of them were put there to basically study in '08, '09, with the idea that we might have to implement some of those in '9, '10. But if we've done a sufficient amount of analysis, and the board deems that they want to do some of those things now, it's just, I think, as, as Board Member Harder said, it's a process issue and making sure that the stakeholders are involved.
Do we do the, do we deal with math class size reduction? Speaking of our inability to do math here, did we do that?
I think you took one off.
But we didn't deal with the other part of it.
You didn't deal with the other half.
So, I will make a motion here that we cut math, how do I say that, I'm sorry?
Math class size.
Size reduction. As much as we don't want to do this, yes. So, it's motion and a second?
Well, I just, I'm really not in favor of, of increasing class size. And I'm wondering if it would be, if we could deal with at least the high school parity issue first. We have, it, I think we've, I know we've, we've bantied numbers around a bit, but I thought we had about 180, I'm sorry, $486,000 that we could keep on the, that we could keep.
That's not, for me, it was, you mean, after getting rid of the half of the-
Yeah.
Because, I think that's taking it to 4 million, is that what you were doing? As opposed to 4,000,150,000?
I don't think so, I think I was keeping it at, in fact, I was keeping it at, I think I was keeping it at 4.2. I'm not positive.
If, if we took this total and had a, had a corrected total, which is the correction for V in the revision, we held aside another $150,000 for the school services recommendations, then we would have to hit $573,000 off of this list.
I actually come to 577,415 to be pretty specific. And then we've already taken off 285.5 for English CSR. So, if you want to include the ninth grade CSR as part of the discussion with high school parity, that's another thing that needs to be tabled until our next meeting.
I'm sorry, did, did we agree to table high school parity?
No.
No.
It's, well, it's, we didn't agree- It's, well, it's, we didn't agree to anything, but we...
Okay.
It's just... It was to, we weren't sure where that was going and what was going to happen, so we're just going to stay with that amount right now. And leave the 320 on the table there for that one. What I have circled left is the ninth grade is the 285 there, then 425 for the psychologists we haven't voted on, the 320 for the high school parity, and 122 for the librarians.
It's 108.
108, excuse me, 108.
Yes, that's, that's what, that's what I have left too.
That's what we all, we all agree on that, okay. Second. Okay, motion to postpone, which is what the superintendent has recommended. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, I know, I'm just...
I'm sorry, I thought we already did that. I thought we already took a vote, unless the vote failed.
No, we didn't, we didn't actually vote.
Is that recommended?
We were...
Dr. Sarvis, I'm sorry, and I guess I'm missing something in this. Did you recommend that we table that item?
Well, look, may I, may I explain that, and I don't want to get too lengthy, but if we can't count on movement toward parity, then it needs to come off of this list and, and it may not even be a possibility. What we can't do is negotiate right here with staff members. We've got just a couple of staff members here. What you heard from staff members was, I think, do you have my numbers? No, my numbers are right under here. What I, what we just heard from staff members was, well, they don't know if they can get to the 320. They think they can get to essentially 32 to 1, which would be a savings to the district of $170,000. We could probably, with some reliability, put that on the list as $170,000. We, and probably, I'm getting a head nod from Lane here as well. We probably have some assurance that we could get at least to that. Now, in the future, if we could get more, then some others, it may affect some other decisions that we would have to make tonight.
You know, I think that's one way to go at it. My concern is, is that if we accept that tonight, then that's essentially going to make it a done deal. And there won't be any more movement there. And I don't know if it's possible to make more movement, but we've essentially foreclosed that opportunity. In fact, I think if we take a vote on that tonight.
That could be. I'm concerned about not taking a vote because we've been having discussions for five months and, and I really wanted the, the school to figure out how that could be done without disrupting the, the school and, and the block's schedule. And we haven't gotten there yet. So I don't know what it would take. Maybe it would take stacking up the remaining amount against other cuts that would have to be enacted unless we got more movement from San Marcos.
Well, I think that's probably what, what I'm trying to avoid is, I would like to try and, and, and reach that sort of maximal place with San Marcos and then make some other decisions rather than saying, okay, you won't move your, this is what you're costing other schools. I don't, I don't want to get to that point.
Okay.
So by tabling it, do we do that?
When do you have to submit the numbers to the county?
Tomorrow.
Make them watch the tape.
Torture them.
And Dr. Sarvis will agree with me. When they came and saw us two months ago, they wanted them the next day. So we told them we needed time to process, and we've gone through, I think, a significant process here.
Well, I would be inclined to adopt S as it is with the understanding that it has to be negotiated. So we will ultimately end up with whatever we negotiate.
Well, here's my question, because do we have to include the 150,000 right now for the school services plan?
Because that is the difference between what, the 170 that you're suggesting and the 320 that's listed.
Because the way, the way, you know, I'm, I'm subtracting from the 4,737, and what I see is that, when, really specifically, we had 577,415 that we could, we could possibly take off the table. When you take off that half of the English CSR, it leaves 311,915, which is already...
Well, I, I think there's two things. Right now, I see P1 has still not been dealt with. Is that correct? R, S, and V.
Exactly.
Okay, and so I see we're at about, what, 3,584 in cuts at this point in time. So I think the question was, the additional 150. I know you're struggling. I'll, I'll figure a way. I'll come back somehow, some way. I'll turn over rocks or something.
But we still have to make cuts here.
You still got to meet the 4 million irrespective.
Well, you may, one way to go about it is prioritize those cuts. For instance, if, if we wanted to go ahead with parity to this level of $320,000, but then prioritize the other cuts so that if we didn't achieve this, then those other cuts would kick in.
Thank you. That sounds doable.
I, I think the other thing too is, is I think just what you did with ninth grade class size reduction, you could take, you know, reduce the amounts in some of those areas, like, and... I'm trying to find the one I was looking at.
The librarians, 50,000 off the librarians or something.
Yeah, you could do some things, or, yeah, psychologists, you could do less than five.
That's what I was going to ask. Could we reduce it from 18 to 15 or...
Yeah, you can look, I mean, you can balance between those as long as you achieve the 4 million dollars.
I was just going to propose for the psychologists to add one, or going from 18 to 13, instead go from 18 to 14.
I'm, I guess it just depends to me how it all adds up together.
I was, I feel like we've gotten a little bit lost in our numbers in terms of how much we still need to cut and what we still have on the table. And I was wondering if there was, if there would, if it would be worthwhile to maybe ta- table this item for a few minutes, move on to maybe item E2 that doesn't directly involve Mr. Smith. Let him maybe just...
Okay.
Go give us an update and bring it, and then bring it back.
A nice visual, maybe, something we could...
I mean, nothing, nothing that's going to... I'm, I'm saying just something quick, so...
Well, I, I mean, yeah, I, I think that you're basically...
It would...
You're at 3.58 right now, roughly.
Helpful for, I think, for us to be able to see where we are. And then also, if you could show us, I think, what 1FT, FTE for the school psychologist would mean.
85,000.
85,000, okay.
So, I'm sorry, did you have the number?
Yeah, it suggests you take 5 into 425.
No, 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 I mean, the 3 million.
Yeah, 3 million, Robin, you were at the same place, 3,584.
We're at 3,584.
72, or 251, that's what I had. And then if you add the total of the things that you haven't acted on, it's 1,138,785.
And what's the difference then? 288,000?
No.
I'm sorry, you said if we add up the ones that we haven't acted on, it's...
1138,785.
1138,78...
38, say that again, 11?
1138,785.
And we can all subtract.
So you're, you need 415,749 more. Is that what you got, Robin? Pretty close.
That doesn't seem, that doesn't seem right. It, it seems like it, we have more than I thought we had.
Well, let's add them up again.
I, I, I actually endorsed Mrs. Cordero's suggestion that, that Mr. Smith have a few minutes to, you know, call through the list.
Okay.
And while we move on to another item that doesn't involve him.
I would actually, could I suggest that we move on to item E5? Which is student expulsions?
Oh, since we have to do that anyways tonight.
But wait, we have, we can do that next, but we actually have audience members, I believe, waiting on the discussion of E2.
I just sent them home.
Oh.
I foresaw that we would not come to our decisions before 10:30 and sent them home about 20 minutes ago.
We have, um, case number 0708-50. Do I hear a motion?
In the case of 0708-50, vote, I'm sorry, move...
Please, please, we need...
Move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the administrative hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Abstained.
So it's three, one against, one abstention.
An absence.
Absence, sorry, absence.
In the case of 0708-59, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes four with one, oh, you weren't, that's right, I'm sorry, it's... Yeah, it's three with, three with two absences.
In the case of 0708-60, vote to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's three with two absences.
In the case of 0708-65, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's three with two absences.
In the case of 0708-54...
Excuse me, excuse me, we need to back up. Where did you...
Cordero.
0708-54, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's three with two absences.
In the case of 0708-56, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Uh, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Three with two absences.
In the case of 0708-52, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Three with two absences. Okay. I feel like we did something. Okay, so we're back to E1.
Are we?
Are you ready for us?
Are you ready for us? Could you make the font, font a little bigger? I want, I want commas too, but that's all right. That's hollersides, no, I want commas. Just make the font bigger. Thank you. Okay.
When you said that, Mike came in today and like, you know, typical business manager, I've got like chicken scratch everywhere, and he goes, well, look at this, and it's like, oh, and this equation format. He must be a science teacher or something.
So is, is there a motion on the table? I can't remember anymore.
Oh, yeah. But I, I would like to...
Oh, that was my, yes.
Oh, wait a second.
Well, let's do the, how about the math?
We had a motion on the table to postpone considerations of...
Oh.
Of the, of S. And it was seconded.
Okay. Let's do the, do the tabling, the parity issue.
Postponing is the word I use.
Postponing.
There's a difference.
Okay. I'm not sure, is that, okay, is that the word we...
Actually, I'm happy to withdraw the motion if people want to go at this differently.
Okay. Can I, can I make a motion that we, would it help?
Do we already have a motion on the floor?
We do have, Ms. Malikoff, move to cut math class size reduction.
I'll withdraw that. I'll withdraw that. Let's start fresh.
There was a motion on the table prior to that, on the floor, that I made to postpone S, and I thought that was seconded. Which one came first?
She, she just tabled, she just withdrew her, I, I will withdraw my motion, which is the math. I'm going to wait, we're going to leave that one to go for right now. You withdrew your second, I believe, Ms. Harder, is that correct? I think you were the second.
If you did, I, I will. And I thought this was...
I thought she was, who was the...
Okay, did you second?
Do you mean on...
No, the other one.
Cutting mass, class size reduction. Okay, the other one? Noel?
Oh, it was Parker. It was Noel and Parker, and you want your, you want to vote on this?
Well, I'd like to get a little bit more clarity on it before you vote.
Okay.
So will somebody restate the motion, please?
The motion was just to, simply to postpone consideration of S.
What kind of clarity would you like? Um, no, I think that, given the existing numbers, if, if we're going to go to 4 million instead of 400, 4,150, that certainly improves the situation.
And did we agree that that's what we were going to do?
Well, to be...
Well, another option is to postpone, is to join S with the SSC recommendations so that when that issue's resolved, you have some ability to fund some of those recommendations.
Dr. Sarvis, I mean, are you, given that everything is negotiable still with the, the situation with San Marcos, do you feel that we could vote on S now? Given that it's all hypothetical, or do you think it's better for us to table it?
My recommendation would be to stack other cuts right up against it. I mean, these are all trade-offs. If we don't achieve that, then we cut in other areas, and they might be a psychologist, they might be a high school librarian.
So your recommendation would be to give an order to this right now, like, say, like, if, if we can do S, we'll do S. If, if we can't do S, we'll, that kind of thing?
Yes. If we're not able to achieve S, then these other cuts would be enacted.
And I would say we'd have to achieve S within a specific period of time. Otherwise, you know, we, we need to meet the budget development timeframe, and so I can't have that hanging out there that we don't know what cuts are enacted.
I believe the staff is poised for a vote on it. Isn't that what I heard? Yes? Okay, thank you.
Well, I still have a motion on the table.
Do we have a motion?
I didn't quite hear, I think that exchange should be public.
The, the staff is poised for a vote on S as it stands, I believe. Okay.
So do we have a motion still on the floor?
Oh.
Do, Mr., Mr...
Okay, so they're poised for a vote that could go as high as what S achieves.
The motion on the table right now is simply to table S.
To postpone.
Yeah, postpone, postpone it, so.
I think, given that we need to, I feel like we need to reach four million tonight, and if we vote to table S, then that means we are by, almost by definition, in cutting everything else. And I don't think that that's exactly, that's not what I would like to do, because I think S should be in the mix of what we're cutting.
And actually, I'm, I'm willing to, to vote on it in order to put a list of cuts that reach four million dollars in front of the county, and go back and make amendments, should it not reach that level.
And I think we have to keep in mind, too, that the last time we saw S, the number was more like five sixty instead of three twenty, so it's much, this is definitely a phase one instead of a totality.
Okay. So those, all those in favor?
This was a table.
Of tabling the motion?
Yeah.
All the, S. All those in favor of tabling S?
I want, I would like to withdraw the motion.
Oh, okay.
Well, something Mrs. Harder just said to me.
Okay.
I mean, the idea of going back and revisiting, because I didn't know that was going to be possible.
Okay, then I would like to.
On the base of that information, I would withdraw my motion.
I would like to move that we place S on the, in our cuts, that we adopt S as a cut.
Second.
Any other discussion? And it'll have to change if something changes. It's one of the assumptions.
We acknowledge that it's negotiable, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, under the understanding.
Yes. And it passes five zero, I think. We all understand that. Okay.
And I, I mean, let me ask this question, I've already voted, but I sort of had the image that there ought to be some kind of a dialogue negotiation going on, and I, is that happening?
Well, there has been for a number of months. Now.
We need a good Lyndon Johnson session.
Yeah, well.
Lock him into a room.
Unfortunately, that's not how negotiations works, because we have stipulated ways to go about it. But I had hoped to be able to come to the board with some definitive answer and say, they're willing to, to give us this, and I just don't have that answer. And I'm reluctant to say very much about it, because it's, it's still a negotiable item.
Yeah.
And, you know, you don't interfere publicly with that negotiation process. So I do wanna be sensitive to that.
Didn't Lyndon Johnson do most of his negotiating in the bathroom?
That's what I was thinking too. His pants down.
That wasn't the room I was thinking of.
Maybe we need a Governator cigar tent.
If we take off the three twenty, we're, we've done that, given, if we can say, given that, can we do, do we have enough, enough money left over for the math, for one psychologist, for fifty thousand for the librarians?
We're at three million nine oh four.
So that's too much. I did too much.
You can always do more on the basis that we don't know what's going to happen.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I wanna go to four million. I'm not, I'm not there, I'm not willing to. I think we could actually take, uh, take it up to, uh.
How about your algebra one?
Add three more FTEs back into the school psychologists.
So drop the reduction from five to three?
To two.
Own to two.
So that we'd be taking off?
At eighty-five thousand per FTE, that would be one seventy.
Does this mean we're foregoing? Knowing the math? If we reduced school psychologists by two FTEs, I think.
Oh, I, that's what I meant, was that I, I was not saying that correctly, I'm sorry. I just said take off.
Yeah, it's four million seventy-four. Yeah, because psychologist is eighty-five thousand dollars per unit.
If we reduce two psych, FTEs from the school psychologists, we could keep everything else.
Is that the, the whole thing with the librarians, the whole hundred and eight?
Yes. We would have achieved, we would have achieved our four million by reducing two FTEs.
This doesn't make sense somehow.
The problem is that on V, I would, I would like to take at least half that off the table, in order to keep a librarian in all three high schools.
No, what I'm saying is.
You can keep every, everything that remains on the table, is that correct?
If, if we reduce.
Two items back in.
But it just, that just doesn't make sense. We had seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand to play with. And.
Oh.
X was not passed.
I have X circled.
No, X was passed. Yeah, yeah.
What about?
Yes.
Sorry, the revised total.
Correct, that's correct.
How come what I said then didn't work?
I don't know that anybody heard, it should be, it should be four thirty-five, I'm sorry, four twenty-five minus one seventy, whatever that.
Yeah. I guess I'm just, I'm still trying to figure this out, Mr. Smith, because we essentially, your revised total was four million seven hundred and twenty-three thousand as the, as possible cuts, right?
Right.
So we had seven hundred and twenty-three thousand thirty-six dollars that we could
Let's back into it.
And, and we put in, I mean, if you just look at ninth grade class size reduction alone, a five seventy-one, and, um, that's.
No, it's not, it's not five seventy-one, it's the two eighty-five.
Well, it's two eighty-five five, but, you know, we're saying, let's put the math back in as well, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't add up.
We haven't cut anything. We haven't, we haven't taken. Did you say that we had to, we were allowed to retain?
Well, here's what I'm gonna do.
In, in your calculations?
Let's work backwards.
Ms. Parker?
Well, according to his revised total, what we had available in cuts was four million seven hundred and twenty-three thousand and thirty-six.
So we had seven hundred and twenty-three thousand.
And. That you could leave on.
And I'm coming up with that we're keeping six hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Have you, not putting the math back in? I mean, what, 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 do you have, what are you adding together to get six hundred and forty-eight thousand?
Because class size reduction all by itself is five seventy-one.
Just for, but that's in English and math, so I'm not sure.
Yeah. So I'm adding a hundred and eight, two eighty-five, two eighty-five. Two eighty-five five, okay, I didn't have that five in there. A hundred and eight for.
For the librarians.
Oh, so you're, you're cutting the library. Now, we're talking about what we're keeping or what we're cutting? What we're keeping. Oh, okay. So it would be?
One oh eight.
One oh eight, two eighty-five, and two fifty-five from the school psychologists. And that, to me.
And then the five seventy-one.
Adds up to six forty-eight, seven eighty-five.
Sorry, you said one oh eight plus two eighty-five five plus two eighty-five five plus two fifty-five?
No, I, one oh eight, two eighty-five. Okay, that's the librarians. Then the two eighty-five from the class size reduction, two eighty-five five, I'm sorry, from class size reduction.
Five seventy-one.
And then two hundred and fifty-five from the school psychologists that we are keeping.
That, that is certainly going to be more than six hundred and.
And then here's my question.
Six forty-eight.
We still haven't.
I have six forty-eight. Don't you have six forty-eight?
No.
Yeah.
Six forty-eight.
No. It's eight something.
I have a question. Have we dealt with item U, the site-based resource program specialists?
I think that we eliminated them.
One hundred and eight thousand.
And then five seventy-one.
Say it again?
One oh eight.
One oh eight.
One oh eight, two eighty-five.
Plus two eighty-five.
Oh, you know, no, I think, oh, I see, you're, you're adding that wrong, Annette, it's not one oh eight, two eighty-five. I mean, that is that, but then you're only, you're only doing the one class size reduction, you're not doing both class size reductions.
It's five seventy-one.
You're just doing the English CSR, is that correct, Annette? Okay, 'cause when you were saying that before, we hadn't, we haven't eliminated that.
Right.
But we.
This is the psychologist's class size librarian. The class size reduction.
That comes to eight something.
We're taking, we're keeping it.
So, this is what I did, is I took the.
You're eliminating, you're eliminating math.
Yeah.
I took the four million seven two three oh three six, and then I subtracted out the two eighty-five five hundred, the four hundred and twenty-five thousand, the three hundred and twenty thousand, and the hundred and eight two eighty-five, which is one million one three eight, and I'm at three million five eight, which is, that's where we thought we were before.
Right.
So.
Right.
Still, because you have to remember, the total list is four point seven, you're not arriving back at four, so that's why it might seem like there's a disconnect there. Because we have all the items on the table.
But we actually can't keep everything still, we still have to get rid of that ninth grade math CSR.
Yes, right.
To do that, we'd have to get rid of the ninth grade math.
Or go down just to algebra.
And that's about.
Three classes.
No, it's more than that, but, but I had it figured out, it was actually.
Pardon me?
I don't even know where it is at this point.
Hundred seventy-four two. Yeah. Yeah, I haven't voted on it yet. That's right, at this point.
Okay, it becomes down to ma, the math, this class size reduction versus some psychologists versus some librarians, or some, some portion of librarians. Um, do I hear a motion? Can we start with maybe, we don't know what the, the price would be for just the algebra, do we?
Well, actually, I, I worked, I worked backwards. It was, but based on last year's ninth grade class, which is not the same number. And to, for geometry only, it would be about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So subtract a hundred and ninety from two eighty-five five, and that'll tell you what the algebra, about what the algebra cost would be. One ninety-five five.
Is that?
Well, like you said, you don't know what, how the numbers are gonna shake out in the fall, that, that's the unknown.
Are we allowed to, with class size reduction, say a certain, we'll spend a certain amount?
Actually, what I'd like to propose is just to put it on the table, in order to reach the four million dollar mark. See if Mr. Turnbull has any information to offer with regard to, you know, Casey money or, or other modifications that would be made. So, put it on the table tonight, and then, if we can, if we're able to, to, to work our way back.
Okay.
But, you know, we need to hit the four million dollar mark.
Okay.
You know, we have a negative declaration in front of the county, and I wouldn't wanna be Mr. Smith or Dr. Sarvis to sit in front of them tomorrow without having hit the four million dollar mark.
Okay. So I hear a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion to include ninth grade class size reduction in math on the reduction list.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think I heard three. All those opposed?
No.
No. So it passes three two. Okay, are we? What's our total now? What's our total now? Three million eight six? Right. I'm sorry. When you gave us three, five, eight, four, previously? Yeah. That, did that include the three twenty for parity? So when you add that in for, for parity, then that gets us up to three point nine, doesn't it? But we had voted on the parity one previously.
No, we voted on.
For three twenty.
Eric, did we revise that four seven to include the two eighty-five they took out for English? Two eighty-five five we took out for English?
That could be a problem, huh?
Yes.
Is that in the total?
That's not part of the four seven twenty-three.
That's the issue. The two eighty-five five hundred is embedded in that total. If we split ninth grade for math, that was not pulled out of the total.
Okay.
So that needs to be.
So, okay.
I think they're still pretty close.
Right.
Let's go ahead and subtract that out.
I'm sorry. The two eighty-five five hundred needs to be subtracted out of the four million seven hundred, two hundred and thirty, thirty-six, because it's only half of class size.
Six three in cuts.
We still have reached four million one hundred and eighty-nine.
You're gonna be really close.
Minus two hundred and thirty.
So that, Annette, your intuition was correct, that's the issue.
Is this right? This is what we've cut. So, we still have cut four hun, four million one hundred and eighty-nine, correct?
You'll see here in a minute.
Cut.
Yeah, I think you're right.
What I did. So it's just six, we should have, yeah. We've made six million in cuts.
Six million.
Six hundred.
Four million.
Uh, six hundred and thirty thousand. What am I doing? No, I'm doing. I have six hundred and thirty. Tell me. There's the librarian. Librarians, math, the English, the English, the lot, the psychologists, that's all it is. Why is this so hard? So you, so you subtract this from this? Do I have the wrong total here, is that one? No?
There you go.
There you go.
So we're still a hundred thousand short?
Ah, I get it, because you're.
Because your base, base was incorrect, because when we bifurcated class size reduction.
Okay, so when you gave us the three, five, eight, four, was that based on subtracting from the total?
It wasn't based on.
Or was it based on adding up what we had cut?
It's based on adding up what you cut versus that gross number, but that gross number did not reflect the bifurcation of class size reduction.
What I'm trying to fig, I'm sorry, what I'm trying to figure out is, I was, thought I was just adding all the numbers we had cut.
What I did is I took the total amount versus what was cut, and then went to target.
And subtracted.
Target, right. And so that was the issue.
Okay, so.
You're not quite there yet. My apologies.
Okay. So, we have a choice here of, again, a portion of librarians or the psychologists. Sorry. That's what it comes down to. Can you do a half of a?
Actually, if you, if you add in one psychologist and half of the librarian amount, you, you exceed the four million dollar mark. Sort of like cutting the baby.
I mean. Could we go to two psychologists and then save librarians?
I would suggest cutting two FTEs from the psychologists and leave the librarians intact. I hear two people, I hear two with that idea, so, you wanna make a motion? Yes. I move that we cut two FTEs. I move that we cut two FTEs from school psychologists rather than the five. Which is how much? Which is one-seventy.
That was what we did already. It doesn't get us anything more.
No, we. No, we didn't, we took it out, we didn't do it. We didn't do it. We did, we went back to two fifty-five.
So it was, it was, it was up on the screen and then removed?
Mm-hmm.
It was never voted on?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Can I make sure we got this? So it's a hundred and seventy off the, the. No, it's got to be. We're, we're subtract, we're taking off, we're, we're cutting a hu. Then a hundred and eight, two eighty-five, and then the two sixty-five. Two eighty-five, excuse me, five hundred, and that's where we are. Okay. So that gets us up to. That four-one-five-nine is not correct.
No, you just, you just reduced.
We're cutting one-seventy. We're keeping two fifty-five.
Right.
It brings us to four million seventy-four dollars.
Thirty-four, two hundred and fifty-one. Okay. Which is where we were, like, a million years ago. No, I still like to do it this way.
No, the amount of the cut is not reduced to one-seventy.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. We're only cutting one-seventy.
Oh, from the four twenty-five.
Okay.
Is that right? No. That doesn't seem right. Yeah, but it's. But. He's right. Yeah. But Dave, David, are those, Dave, are those the ones we're, is that how much we're keeping, or is that how much we're cutting? It's how much we're keeping.
This was originally four twenty-five.
Uh-huh. And now we're at, and we're taking.
So instead of cutting four twenty-five, you're cutting.
One-seventy. Um, no, no, no. So it leaves us.
Cutting one-seventy.
No, we're, we're taking one-seventy off. No, we're cutting one-seventy.
From the four twenty-five, which means that there'll be two.
No. No, Kate, we're not cutting four, we're not cutting the one-seventy from the four twenty-five. We're cutting the one-seventy out of the budget.
So you're only getting rid of two?
Yes.
Okay. I don't get it. So instead of spending four twenty-five, we're spending two fifty-five? No. Okay, so that gets.
These are cuts.
Right, so it's one, it should be one-seventy.
Yeah. No.
You were to revise this amount and change this.
That's the cut.
Yeah. Yeah. It would change the savings. We've, we are cutting one-seventy. That's right, so we've, we've reached a total of four million seventy-four dollars. Seventy-four, thousand two hundred and fifty-one, yeah.
And there's a motion and a second, right? Do I need to second? Did you make a motion, Mrs. Squidero?
I did make a motion. Is everybody okay with that number? Yeah. No? Doesn't work for you?
We need to call, call for the question?
Question.
Yeah.
What's the question here?
Cut two school psychologists instead of five.
Cutting two psychol, your, your, your mic isn't on. We're cutting two FTEs in psychol, from psychologists instead of five FTEs. That's my motion. And that's what was seconded. So can we call the question?
Yes, please.
Yeah, Shirley, does that work? Another, another head nod.
She's the one who bought, got us to that point. That's her figure.
Can we call the question? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
So it passes four-one. Yes, that's what that did. Okay. It's eleven o'clock. So we got to four million. Do we want to prioritize the remainder so that if the parity issue is not, doesn't reach three-twenty, we know what to do?
You do have one FTE there. That certainly tells what we're trying to do with that. Well, there are any number of possibilities in between. You could say, you could say, well, we'll give you that plus one FTE. I'm thinking, I know this isn't a conversation, but.
Your mic's not on.
I'm thinking that that then ties the board's hands as well.
Well, this also doesn't take into that extra one hundred and fifty thousand that.
Yes.
Doctor, Mr. Smith suggested we should try to reach.
And maybe that one FTE should be spent there.
I'm letting it. Is there, are we kind of done, or do we need to?
Well, would you like to take formal action on librarians to, to. So that we sort of finalize this, round it out?
Yes, I move that the librarians be removed, be removed from consideration.
Second that? I'm concerned about removing things from consideration when we don't know what happened with parity. I would prefer to talk about priorities.
Doctor, no, would you like to amend your motion to make that a first priority to keep?
Well, that suggests it's going to be an automatic thing that happens.
No. No.
What's, why, we're setting priorities for us or for the staff?
Well, can we just, can we just say that?
Every time we vote, we set priorities.
It's the, the issue is whether.
We're resetting them for the staff, which needs guidance.
Can we just say that P, R, and V are still on the table? And we have not taken action on them? No.
That's not true.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did, but we did take, we did take action on the, V is the only one that's. Yeah, so can we just say V is still on the table?
Trying to codify that.
Well, you were taking it off the table. I would like to keep it on the table until we find out what's.
What's going on in San Marcos.
Well, I, I would guess from the discussion, it might go something like this. That we've already made the cuts. If we're unable to obtain the, this movement toward parity at San Marcos, then, then we would enact. Well, let me turn it around.
Well, that's not a priority, that's a contingency plan.
Well, exactly so. Exactly so.
I withdraw my motion, and maybe someone would like to make a contingency motion.
Do I hear a motion?
That's why I ask, is something that's going to happen automatically, or, or back to us?
Yeah, I would guess we'd stack up against that, the, the school psychologist positions and the librarians, and we'd prioritize those two.
I, I have a question. When you, if you can't reach the three-twenty on the parity issue.
Yes.
Will, will there be a need to take action to, for, forward something to the county before this board meets again? When will you know if you can reach the three-twenty or not?
Well, I, I thought we were going to have some decision on it in February, and then I thought March, and then I thought certainly by this meeting. So I don't have an answer to that.
Because I'm.
It's been worked on.
Well, my point that I'm making is, if, if Mr. Smith has to forward the budget tomorrow, then it's going to be forwarded with, I assume, with the assumption that we're reaching the three-twenty.
Yeah, and I, I think in all fairness, if we can't reach that, we're going to have to have something done in early May, because when we put together the third interim, we have to have a multi-year projection that accompanies that, that reflects the reductions.
But at that time, it would, it could come back to it. This, we could, we could determine what to cut at that point.
Yes, however, in the case of librarians, there wouldn't necessarily be a change, but in the case of psychologists, we have layoff letters out. If we rescind those tonight, you can't enact that at some later point. I mean, they need to be just left hanging, apparently, until we can get some word from San Marcos.
So, but that, it seems that's sort of the case. I mean, there's nothing we can do about that.
Right. So, so are you directing us not to rescind those layoff notices and to those psychologists?
It, it sounds like that would be the prudent thing to do, since we don't know what. I mean, we certainly have that as our intention.
Well, we can take that as a direction.
But if we can't, if we can't meet that goal. How about a, a motion that says that these cuts are based on, are contingent on making that agreement of three-twenty? Yeah, I kind of think, I thought that was sort of a given.
It's a given.
Because it seems to me that they're also contingent on what our ultimate budget is going to be. I'm just thinking that tomorrow, they figure out, they make an agreement, and it's not quite three-twenty. It's somewhat a little bit below. What are they going to do?
They're not going to do anything, we're going to have to struggle with it.
The budget, they're not going to take their vote tomorrow. But he has to hand, or even next week, he has to hand something in.
I'd rather leave this meeting with something like, if we're not able to reach this by such and such a date, that we would go ahead with, with the idea of replacing retired, certificated librarians with media technicians, and reducing school psychologists up to that total of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
That makes sense?
The difficulty I have with that is, it would depend on how far away from that three-twenty we were, because we might choose to play around with those numbers again, with how much we reduce the library technicians and how much we reduce the psychologists.
And in fact, we could bring that back to you.
Well, that, that's what I was saying.
At this point, we need to, we need to hold back three hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of.
Well, I, maybe I wasn't being clear. I thought that's what I was saying, that if we say, for example, that it's continued upon reaching this decision by such and such a date.
Yes.
I'm guessing that date is not going to be before our next board meeting.
No.
So this could come back to an, the next board meeting for us. You could say, we didn't reach it, we only got this much, and we could then decide what we want, what cuts we want to make additionally.
We could do that. I'd rather have you place automatic triggers in place now.
I don't, I, I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding why that would be the, the preference, but I am uncomfortable with that for the reason that I stated, that we might not want to cut them exactly the way they are here. We might want to adjust the numbers.
Okay. Well, as long as we had a clearly stated intention that between these two items, whether it's reduction of psychologists, or the possibility of replacing retiring, certificated librarians with media technicians, that, that the board would then be making whatever amount cut in those two areas, we could bring that back to you for a decision about that.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was my expectation.
Is there going to be question about whether we actually decided that in the absence of a vote?
Let's assume yes.
I will move that we retain the.
That's pretty cute.
I will move that we retain items R and V on our list of possible cuts in the event that we do not achieve the three hundred and twenty thousand in the parity issue.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
So it passes four-one.
Thank you. I know what to do now.
Okay.
And Eric and I know what to say.
Okay.
Who do it, Jordan?
Uh, no, we have to go back to our consent agenda. Yeah, and also, is there anything else on this agenda? We absolutely have, do we have to do that on?
Need the resolution on the E three.
The trans.
Yeah.
We need, we do need the trans.
Okay, so we are going, starting a new item after ten-thirty.
I'll move to start a new item after ten-thirty.
I don't think, do we act on that? I thought you. Normally, it's up to me, but I'd like a vote. I'd like you to tell me it's okay. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it passes, I guess, five-zero. I didn't hear anything else.
No, not with me.
Four-one.
Okay, and item E three, I'd like to move to approve resolution number oh-seven-oh-eight dash three-two, authorizing the borrowing of sixteen million. I'm sorry, is that a fifteen?
Fifteen.
Thank you. And funds for fiscal year oh-eight-oh-nine, and the issuance and sale of oh-eight-oh-nine tax and revenue anticipation notes for the Santa Barbara School District.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes five-zero. Do we have to do E four also?
Yes, we do need to do E four. Elaine?
Mrs. Salvadaro. Thank you, Board members and Dr. Sarvis. This is the time of the year that we do bring forth to the board proposals for reductions or layoffs for classified employees, mainly because of the April twenty-ninth deadline that is in the ed code. And so obviously, tonight's meeting, in conjunction with what we typically have to do at this time of the year, was very trying in the decisions, in the reductions that we've proposed and what we were acting on. And so what you've had, what happened in the report, that we did include the school health assistance and the, and the reductions. And I think just to make the point that, as Eric Smith indicated, these are negotiable issues. We do have to talk about and, and meet for the reduction and the impact on those reduction of hours, as well as the impact on the layoffs. We have been meeting with CSA, and we are scheduled to meet again at the end of this weekend in May. We have dates to, to move forward on that. So what you're seeing here on this report is that we have anticipated not only the expected reductions, but also we further included those in the secondary. And if we, once we've completed negotiations on staffing ratios, and these proposed FTEs are in place, we see a potential of eighty-seven, three hundred and fifty. That's what's in there.
I actually have a question, Madam Chair, if I may.
Mm-hmm, please.
About the, the secondary ratios that you've got here.
Correct.
Why, and why just these three schools? I mean, La Cumbre is a smaller school, but I don't understand about the two high schools, and why all of, you know, more of the schools aren't represented here. I don't.
These are based on proposed staffing ratios that we will be looking into, and that has been brought forth. And we did look at these schools due to their current enrollments. And that's where, where their proposals were indicating are based on those enrollments.
So.
So we don't have La Colina or Santa Barbara High School at that, based on their current enrollments. So those staffing, those are, FTEs wouldn't change.
I, I think one of the issues is, is there's a haphazard, there's not uniformity out there to begin with, so that's why some might appear and some may not.
Some would already conform to the.
Correct.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
Thank you, that makes sense. For an example, Washington School is, is not on the list because of their enrollment, and they would stay at point seven-five FTE. Okay, thank you. Also included in the proposal, and what we've talked about in the fiscal recovery or instructional assistance, and we have identified positions, five in the elementary, five in the junior high, and five in the, in the high school. These are positions that are currently vacant. It won't impact classified staff. And of course, we do look at, as far as with the maintenance of effort and on one-on-one aides, which we definitely would be filling as needed. But we've identified these positions, and so there isn't any impact to the, any classified staff. In addition, we've received. From the administration, from the, I'm sorry, the site administrators, those that have categorical funding positions. And we have identified just a few that it came through, that we are going to send notices out on April twenty-ninth or before April twenty-ninth for eliminations of these positions. Now, also, just to note that in the past years, that we've had the proposals for the reductions or the layoffs, and it depended on categorical funding and where we end up at the beginning of the year. So, in, as an example, with Roosevelt, we were in this situation a year ago, and we eliminated and proposed those, those positions be eliminated. However, funding did come forth, and those positions were reinstated. did come forth and those positions were reinstated. So, again, these are just proposals, it depends, it's based on, on budget and what the projections are in combination with the April 29 deadline. So it is our goal to work with the administrators, with the funding, with budget, to hopefully maintain these positions. If not, we will go forth with ed code and contract language to ensure that everyone's rights are protected.
I'll move to approve the classified general fund and categorical position layoffs due to lack of funds.
Second.
Motion by Cordero, second by-
That was by Harder.
Harder, excuse me, it is late, Harder, second by Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
I think I heard a four ayes, one, is that absent?
Yeah.
Absent, okay, absent. I'm not sure what to call that. Okay, and is there anything else that we absolutely have to do here, thank you so much.
We can move items F2, F3, and F4 to the next meeting, although when we get to the agenda item on future agenda items, we may want to talk about additional meetings. Oh, we will move E2 forward.
We just have the same agenda over and over and over.
Some of these items are, yes.
Did you say E2?
So we'll move E2 forward, F2, F3, and F4.
We're going back to the consent agenda at this point. Ms. Harder, you had a couple, that we'll do yours first.
Yeah, they were, they were really quick. Item D1, on February 19th, Ms. Cordero was absent, on March 18th, I was absent, so I just wanted to do three separate votes on the minutes.
Okay.
So I'll move to approve the minutes of February 12th.
All those in favor? Oh, second, second, I'm sorry, who has a second here?
I'll second it.
Parker's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move to approve the-
Passes 4, 4, 1 is absent.
4-0.
I'll move to approve the minutes of February 19th.
I'll, second. I'll, I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is three. One abstention, one absent.
Okay.
Oh my gosh, are you getting all that?
3-0, Cordero, who abstained? Thank you.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of March 18th.
Second.
I'll give her a chance to write that down.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And they're not abstaining.
So it's three, one abstention, one absence.
3-0-1-1.
And then item, item D2, it was two items, one involves smoothies, one involved donuts, it doesn't tell you the time of day for the fundraiser. I'm assuming it's not during the school day. And one was even using the correct form, but they misunderstood the use of the particular column and repeated the date, so it's just like, we need to make-
We try, we try so hard.
I know, but we've got to get better than trying.
Do you want to ta, do you want to just table that one till we find out more, or do you want to?
No, we can move to approve and then just work on getting the forms right.
Okay. I hear a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll move to approve, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's four, any opposed, no, it's 4-0, 4-0-1.
And then on item D4, and this is going to require Robin's eyes, so I'll wait until she's done writing. On pa, on the last page of the contract, it's the long page, it lists all the schools and the dates that they're going. And the dates run continuously from March, except for spring break through April, and I'm wondering if the camp dates interfere with star testing.
They're, they're quite careful about that.
Yeah.
Like, this year, for example, star testing is starting next-
21 through 24.
My son took it today, star testing.
No, this is for elementary. Elementary star testing, for example, this year is starting next week. And, and in fact, Adams is going next week, and so they have to have makeup dates for their sixth graders, but that's-
Makeup dates for the star testing, they have that window period, and they adjust accordingly, it's quite a large window. So, yeah, that's a good question, but I don't believe it'll interfere.
Follow up on it.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it's 4-0-1. We have all these other items, you didn't have any others, did you?
No, 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 it was Dr. Wong, the rest.
All the rest.
Move to approve the remainder.
Does anyone want to, did he say he was, did anyone notice the-
Move to approve the remainder, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 4-0-1. Who was the second part? We're on to coming events, we've done enough, board comments and correspondence.
Actually, I have one, sorry, everybody. I went to the science fair on Friday afternoon, and I just brought back a list of all the students who had entered, and it was a county science fair, and it was almost entirely the Santa Barbara School District.
It was. Thank you, I've been waiting for this, so we can announce it here at the board meeting, and we'll announce it at our next meeting.
I, I did, I said the robotics club had, was on internet, was over the internet, their last competition, it was so exciting, I don't know what happened though, I never found out what the final result was, yes.
Same place, I know that they did.
Yes, they were into the finals, it was very exciting. Anything else?
Well, Ms. Keaney and I were at the Dawn's Riders documentary event. It was quite entertaining, and the students were very proud of their, their bikes, and I have to say, they were pretty startling, I thought the ones we had seen in the boardroom were amazing, but they had some, some characteristics that I had not even expected there, so they were pretty exciting.
That's great. Future agenda items?
Future agenda items, anybody have anything they want?
Well, we are pressed, I mean, we do have a, we did have a full agenda for next week. I think we're going to revise it based on tonight's continuations, and that means we'll have more than a full agenda for the following meeting.
So we need to think about whether to have an extra meeting on either, was that May?
May 6th.
6th or May, we wrote this down.
20th.
20th.
I cannot make a meeting on May 6th.
Should we ask Julie to query board members?
Yeah, I left my calendar in the room.
I'll ask Julie to query board members about an extra meeting on May 20.
Or, yeah.
Or someplace in the middle, if you can do something.
Yeah, or a different, well, it's really hard to think of a different night. So, okay, that's all we can do.
Thank you.
Adjourned, thank you for staying.